Good evening. I call to order the Lake Havasu City Council Regular Meeting on Tuesday, May 11th, 2021 at 6:00 PM. We are accepting participation from the public in the meeting live, or you can watch the meeting live on Channel 4, or go to LHCaz.gov/TV. We also are receiving public comment prior to the meeting, one hour prior to the meeting by emailing cityclerk@LHCaz.gov. We'll now have an invocation from Pastor Dale Ray from Lakeview Community Church. Good evening and welcome Pastor.
Out of Proverbs 29, at verse 11, says, "The Lord gives strength with peace. The Lord will bless his people with peace." Precious heavenly Father, tonight as we open this council meeting, we ask that you would shine your face upon our mayor, upon each of the city council members, that you would give them your peace and your wisdom. We thank you for them as they lead us and they guide our city in their administrative work. We pray a blessing upon all of our police officers and all of our firefighters, and all of those in first call responders. We pray that you would guide and keep, sustain each and every one of us as citizens. Are there questions? Since we ask, please.
And we'll now have the Pledge of Allegiance led by the Seroptimists International of Lake Havasu, Luanne Striley and Kathy.
Hello. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
I'm Kathy Molson and I'm here with, from Seroptimists International with my friend. We're both former presidents. First, I'd like to thank the mayor and the city council for this opportunity to share just a little bit about us as you do other organizations in town. 100 years ago in Alameda County, California, a small group of women decided they would look for projects to do as volunteer service to their communities. As the group grew, their first project was working to protect the giant sequoias in California. As the 100th anniversary is celebrated this year internationally, our Seroptimists Club here in Havasu is celebrating our 50th anniversary, just like the city of Bridge. Seroptimis in Latin means best for women. We are 35 members strong and our focus now is more narrow. We are women at our best, helping other women to be their best. We believe the most effective way to do this is to empower women and girls by providing access to education. SI has a voice at the UN as well as for international participation in this goal. We are a 501(c)(3) organization, are in the process of qualifying for Arizona Tax Credit Status. Learn more about us at seroptimistinternational.org. Here in Lake Havasu, we work toward our goal by awarding education and training grants to one qualifying woman who's head of household and in need. This grant is $2,000. The application for this award is due by November 15th to us. We also award several thousand dollars in grants to young women graduating from high school, $2,000 last night. Amounts vary in number of awards, as well as the monetary figure based upon the number of applicants and the amount of funds available, sorry. We hold a foster children's shower each spring to benefit Arizona Children's Society. We hold an annual day-long self-esteem seminar in March each year and invite all sixth grade girls. Junior High Heels is held at Thunderbolt and attracts 100 to 125 young ladies who leave feeling better prepared to transition to middle school at the end of the day. We hope to reinstate this event in 2022 because like everybody else, we were dark in 2021. We sponsor and mentor the S-Club at the high school. We also mentor a young woman who has aged out of the foster care program. We were recently honored to gift a young woman with cash and gift cards. Funding for all of these activities has always come from our annual house and garden tour in December. That fundraiser is no longer available to us, so our last one was in 2019. We will be looking for new fundraising opportunities. We hope some of you might consider putting some of your Arizona tax liability into our program. We expect to have that available for the 2021 tax year. I do have some brochures and some contact information for me if you're interested. Thank you so much for this time again. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for all the great work you do for Lake Havasu City. All right, moving on to item four, the roll call. Ms. Williams, if you please call the roll.
Councilmembers Nancy Campbell?
Here.
Jim Dolan?
Presently here, but all alone.
David Lane?
Here, and we put him over there for a reason.
Michelle Lynn?
Here.
Cameron Moses?
Here.
Vice Mayor Jenny Koch?
Here.
Mayor Kalshihi?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item five is our Call to the Public. This is the opportunity where citizens have to address the city council on matters within the jurisdiction of Lake Havasu City. Your comments must be limited to three minutes. There is a light indicator box next to Ms. Williams. Green means you have your three minutes. Yellow means you have one minute remaining, and red means that the three minutes is up. If you are here to talk on a specific item that's on the agenda, we encourage you to wait until that time because then we can have a two-way conversation, go back and forth. Otherwise, during Call to the Public, we can just listen intently to whatever your thoughts or ideas are, but since it's not agendized, we can't have a two-way conversation. You do not have to sign up to speak at Call to the Public, and we did not have anyone do that, so with this, I'll just open it up, and if anyone would like to address the council, please make your way to the podium and state your name for the record. All right, seeing that, we'll close the in-person Call to the Public. And as I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, we are receiving public input via email. We did not receive any items for Call to the Public, so we'll close the Call to the Public and move on to item six, the Consent Agenda. Would any of the councilmembers like to remove any of the items for separate discussion? Seeing that, I'll obtain a motion.
Mayor?
Yes.
Motion?
Please.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion for Vice Mayor Koch and a second from Councilmember Lane. Is there any further discussion? All right, we're ready to vote.
Aye.
Councilmember Lynn?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries seven to zero.
All right, moving on to item seven, Correspondence Communications Petitions Announcements and the City Manager Report. Item 7.1 is the Investment Report filed as of March 31st, 2021. Ms. Olson included this in the packet for us. Is there any questions? No? All right. We'll move on then to item 7.2, Announced Vacancies on Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees, and Commissions. Ms. Williams?
Mayor and City Council, there are several current and upcoming vacancies on Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees, and Commissions. The following is a listing of those vacancies. Airport Advisory Board, one regular pilot member, one regular non-pilot member, and one alternate pilot member. Board of Adjustment, one regular member, three alternate members. Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, one student member, three regular members. Planning and Zoning Commission, three regular members, and the Public Safety Personnel Retirement System, one regular member. Anyone interested can pick up a packet at City Hall, and they are also available on the city's website at www.lhcaz.gov. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 7.3 is the City Manager's Report. Mr. Knutson?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'd like to start this evening's manager's report with a congratulations to Alex Morris. He was our Utility Supervisor for Public Works in the Water Department, and he retired with nearly 27 years of service with Lake Havasu City here effective on May 28th. Alex was hired on June 6th, 1994 as a service worker too for the wastewater department. He ventured to the Water Department just a year later, and he never looked back. He worked his way up through the ranks until 2015 when he became the Utility Supervisor. Congratulations to you, Alex. Your dedication to our water system, your knowledge and experience will be sorely missed. Mayor, you proclaimed April 29th as Arbor Day in Lake Havasu City. You presented the proclamation to the Parks and Recreation Director, Mike Keen, Field Supervisor and Certified Arborist Craig Geary and his crew, and the after-school program participants came from the Starline Elementary School. This year marks the 150th anniversary of Arbor Day. Man and Specialist Tony Dowell kicked off the celebration, reading the history of Arbor Day to the students. And following the proclamation presentation, the students helped the crews plant 15 drought-tolerant trees to include Mesquite, Texas Ebony, Ironwood, Acacias, Palaverde, and Eucalyptus trees. All planted trees were purchased from Star Nursery, and special thanks to them as they donated an additional 40 5-gallon trees, 20 Mesquite, and 20 Palaverde trees, five of which were given away to the community volunteers, and the rest will be planted in our public landscape and be part of our Memorial Tree Program moving forward. Mayor, you proclaimed May 1st through May 7th as the BPO National Youth Week in Lake Havasu City. It's the Benevolent and Protective Order of Elks, and they have designated this week to honor America's junior citizens for their accomplishments and to give fitting recognition of their services to the community, the state, and to the nation. Our Elks Lodge Number 2399 kicked off the week with a free family open swim at our Aquatic Center. And then Mayor, you proclaimed the week of May 2nd through May 8th as the 52nd Annual Professional Municipal Clerks Week in Lake Havasu City. The Office of the Municipal Clerk is the oldest among public servants and provides the professional link between citizens, the local governing bodies, and the agencies of government at all levels. This week, this last week, the clerks celebrated by having a daily trivia office game in their office. One of the questions they asked was, what year was the longest city council meeting held? Give everybody a second to think about that. The answer was in 2005, and we had a council meeting in 2005 that lasted 6 hours and 21 minutes. We're hoping to break the record this evening. We seriously though, we extend our sincere appreciation to Professional Municipal Clerk Kelly Williams and her staff, Marcella Quillis and Shannon Davis, for the vital services they perform and their wonderful dedication to Lake Havasu City. Thank you, Kelly. And I'd like to congratulate Anthony Kozlowski. He is the Assistant to the City Manager for graduating from the Chamber Foundation for Educational Leadership's Leadership Lake Havasu Class. Just last Thursday was the graduation. He participated in a nine-month program, even though it was a tough year of unknowns and a need for social distancing. The class project for the leadership class turned into a, they had a couple ideas, and ended up a class project resulting in a coupon book that included our local businesses. The book sells for 20 bucks, and the proceeds go back to the Foundation for Next Year's Leadership, Lake Havasu Class. He was lucky enough to have Chief Pete Plathas as the keynote speaker for the event. Chief Plathas touched on leadership and adversity, and it was a great motivational speech for us all. Congratulations to Anthony, and thank you, Chief Plathas. Mayor presented a proclamation for the Lake Havasu Unified School District Teacher of the Year Day in honor of Christina Musselman at last Tuesday's school board meeting. As an elementary first-grade teacher, she's worked for the Lake Havasu Unified School District for the past 19 years, impacting thousands of student lives over the years. Colleagues, administrators who have worked closely with Christina will tell you, she has a heart for children, and she's a leader who deeply believes in the power of mentorship. Congratulations to you, Christina. We had two elementary schools that stood above the rest in Lake Havasu City during the Hayak's Operation Restock the Food Bank Project. Smoke Tree and Starline were the winners. For their efforts, the mayor and the Havasu Youth Advisory Council, or Hayak, presented a certificate of appreciation and a pizza party to their student council class that led their schools to victory. Smoke Tree School collected 1,334 pounds, and Starline School collected 1,342 pounds of food for those in the community that needed. What a wonderful project. I'd like to congratulate you, Mayor Shihi, for receiving the 50th Anniversary Alumni Vision Award from the Mojave Community College Foundation. Lake Havasu City Mayor Kalshihi, Stephanie Engel from Kingman, and Brian Williamson from Bullhead City will be honored with the Vision Award during MCC's commencement ceremonies on May 14th. This is the first year the foundation is presenting the award, which was also planned to coincide with the MCC 50th Anniversary Celebration and commencement ceremonies. It acknowledges MCC alumni who have worked or are working to help improve their local communities. We have four of our high school graduates are graduating high school and will be leaving the Havasu Youth Advisory Council this month to start their new adventures. On the top left, there is Gavin Lince, otherwise known as the mayor. He's been on Hayak for all four years, and he plans to attend ASU Barrett's Honors College in the fall to study business finance and dreams to one day end up on Wall Street. He said, "Hayak has been very important to me these last four years because it taught me how to be active in my community and to solve real-world problems people are facing." Next is Maria Fernandez, was also on Hayak for all four years of high school and plans to stay here in Lake Havasu City and attend ASU Lake Havasu while working at an accounting and tax business office to help grow her opportunities to gain experience for her future career. Maria said, "I learned to network and be inclusive in Hayak." That's, 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 that it's not just about what you do for your community. It's more about who you know and the connections you make to continue to help people and groups in the community. Next is Aiden Bishop. She's been in Hayak for three years, and she plans to attend NAU, majoring in nursing, hopefully to later pursue a career as an aesthetics nurse. Aiden says, "My experience being in Hayak for three years taught me amazing life lessons and tips, and I can take into my future, take into the future with me and use. I learned how to successfully public speak, or speak publicly with adults in leadership roles, and was able to learn many lessons from them. My biggest takeaway from Hayak would be that it really grew my love for philanthropy and wanted to help others in a need that are in need or those that are struggling." And then lastly, it's Aaron Bracamonte, who was in Hayak for two years, and he plans to join the Navy in the hopes of becoming an explosive ordance disposal technician. He says, "My favorite part about being involved with Hayak was helping out my community." I'd like to congratulate our four graduates from high school as well as from Hayak. Because of their hard work and dedication, their future is very bright. Some opportunities for those that would like to join Hayak in the upcoming years. The city is seeking volunteers interested in sharing their time, talent, and welcoming skills to serve as a lobby greeter at City Hall. We're looking for some good-natured and thoughtful volunteers who would greet residents and visitors and provide general information and direction, and would also include a variety of light administrative and basic phone and computer tasks. You have to be 18, and if you like, you can register at LHCaz.gov/volunteer, or you can contact Jerry Bracamonte at 453-4141. And lastly, the COVID report for this evening. As of May 10th, there's been 40 new cases since the last council meeting. You can see the breakdown by month in the graphic shown on the screen. Of course, this information is provided by the Mojave County Public Health Department, and currently there are 28 active cases of COVID in Lake Havasu City. And with that, Mayor, that concludes my report.
Excellent. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to item eight, which is our public hearings. I will start with item 8.1, Consideration and Possible Adoption of an Increase in Water and Sewer Rates and Charges Effective July 1st, 2021. Mr. Kozlowski.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. During this nine-month process, city staff has been working with Wildin Financial Services to compile an abundance of information and gauge the public as it pertains to a water and sewer rate increase. During that process, the team was able to come together with four different options, two for water and two for sewer, in order to help maintain the current system. With the IDD set to expire and the city not implementing a rate increase since 2009, it was important that we continue to move forward with this process. With that being said, I have Kevin Burnett here and Pat on the phone from Wildin to provide a brief presentation and talk about the four different options for a rate increase, and with that, I'll turn it over to him.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Anthony. As Anthony said, I'm Kevin Burnett with Wildin Financial Services. I've been in front of you a few times now, so it's been a long journey, but hopefully a fruitful one and one that we've enjoyed being on. Pat intended to be here in person, but due to unforeseen circumstances, she's on the phone instead, so. So diving right into things, we want to give you a bit of a refresher of where we've been. So the purpose of the rate study, and while we call this a rate study, we wanted to make clear tonight that really when we say rate study, in this case, we're talking about a cost-based study or a cost-of-service study, if you will. So the focus of the cost-of-service study or a cost-based study is making sure that we're allocating costs appropriately. So water revenues are only paying for water-related costs. Sewer revenues are only paying for sewer-related costs. And then within each of the utilities themselves, the rates that were designed for single-family reflect the cost that single-family places on the system. The rates that we've designed for commercial customers reflect the cost of providing service to commercial customers. So with that overview, diving into the rate study or cost-based study or cost-of-service study, as Anthony mentioned, we wanted to make sure that the city was generating the revenues that it needed to to cover its expenses, both on the water and the sewer side. So that includes the operations maintenance, the day-to-day, the staff time, chemicals, that kind of thing, as well as larger, more expensive capital expenses, water lines, sewer lines, lift stations, that type of thing. We had some minimum reserve level requirements that we wanted to look at and make sure that you were adhering to them. I'll get to them in a moment. The same with debt service coverage. That's a legal requirement that you have to meet, so I'll get to that briefly as well. And then the last bullet there just kind of reiterates the cost-of-service principles that we were looking at with this study. So in terms of the financial plans themselves, that was the starting point for us, figuring out how much water revenue was needed, how much sewer revenue was needed to operate the financial plans. So we looked at a 10-year planning horizon. Our focus was more on the first five years. The crystal ball gets a little bit blurrier the further we get from today, but at the same time, we wanted to look at a full 10-year horizon to make sure that we weren't leaving you in dire straits where we developed a five-year plan and then year six, you went off a cliff. We wanted to look at the 10-year plan based on the best available information that we have today. The plans are going to be, continue to be revised and updated on an annual basis. We've mentioned before that the models that we've developed as part of this process and working hand-in-hand with staff over the last nine months, we're going to be turning those over to staff so that they can update them on an annual basis as revenues come in, if expenses are lower or higher than anticipated, growth changes. And both Pat and I will still be available, you know, should somebody pick up the model six months down the road and, hey, Kevin and Pat, can you remind us how we do this? So even though we won't be front and center, we're not, we're not going away. The first revenue increase is proposed to take July, take effect July 1 of this year, and then subsequent rate increases we've got proposed to be effective September 1. That kind of mitigates that peak summer usage season of July and August when water use tends to spike, so we decided to push it off until September 1st to give a little bit of a reprieve during those summer months. So moving into water specifically, why do we need to increase the water revenue? As Anthony said, the last study was done in 2008 with the last increase in 2009. As we looked at the financial plan over the next seven years, expenses were projected to exceed revenues by about $7 million a year on average. So what that told us was the status quo just isn't sustainable. You're going to run out of money. You're not going to be able to find your capital needs or take care of your operating expenses. Anthony also alluded to the IDD tax going away, so that represents about $5.7 million a year. So even if that was still there, the water utility would be facing a deficit of about $1.3 million a year. So the loss of the IDD tax just exacerbates the issue. We've got increasing operational costs, repairing and maintenance of the system. As everyone looks at their household budget, household budgets or costs are increasing year over year. The same holds true with the city's utilities, both water and sewer. We've got to meet and maintain a targeted reserve level, so this is a city policy. It's 15% of the rolling five-year average of revenues. So this is a target that the city has put in place. It's not something that you have to achieve every year, but good financial practices indicate that you should be achieving that target every year. The next one is the debt service coverage. This is a legal requirement. What that says is that you have to have $1.20 of revenue available after paying your expenses to cover your annual debt service of that year. If you drop below that 1.2x, you would be in technical default of your obligation, so we want to make sure that we're hitting that at least 1.2. The city has adopted a policy of 1.5x. That just gives it a little bit of extra cushion. It's best financial practices. It means if you go out and issue debt in the future, you will get a better interest rate because you've taken that extra, that extra step. So moving into the rates themselves, we've developed two different rates for, for single-family. We've got one rate option for the other customer classes. So Option A for the single-family was what we considered to be the balanced approach. During this process, we tasked the staff with telling us what their goals and objectives were for the water utility. Pat and I actually gave them homework that they had to go back and work on and let us know, what's most important to you? Is it revenue stability? Is it conservation? Is it equity amongst the customer classes? So what we tried to do in this first approach, the balanced approach, was incorporate everybody's goals and objectives together. So the primary two were revenue stability and achieve conservation. So that's what we tried to do here. And then the third bullet there was greater equity between inside and outside the IDD. So with the IDD tax now, the rate paid by customers inside the IDD, the water rates are lower than those outside because those inside are paying that tax. Once the tax goes away, everybody will be on the same footing, so everybody's water rates will be the same regardless of whether you're inside the original IDD or not. So with that said, the monthly fixed charges, so they increase by meter size. The larger the meter size, the greater demand you can place on the system, the greater the cost to repair, replace, maintain those meters. So the fee goes up for larger meter sizes. So you can see the current inside rate for the 3/4-inch meter, which is most common for single-family at $5.16, outside it's $6.45, and we're proposing it go up to $9.02. So that's that revenue stability we're talking about, where that's the guaranteed revenue coming in every month. You have to pay that, that monthly base charge regardless of whether or not you're using any water. So this also helps with the customers that we have that are part-time residents. So they're going to be paying a higher monthly base charge going forward in recognition of the fact that we need to maintain that system. We have bills that have to get paid regardless of whether or not they're here in the city using water on any given month. In looking at the single-family volume rates, so again, we've got an outside and an inside rate currently. That's going to go away and get merged into one rate. So what we did here was we maintained the same number of tiers or blocks, if you will, the four different blocks, but we've changed how much water is allowed in each block as well as what the rate is for those blocks. So you can see the first block we're proposing to go down a little bit, and then we've got some of the other blocks shifting around there as well. Option A, volume rate, so this is for multifamily and commercial, and all of these rates are per 100 cubic feet. So it would be in this case, for multifamily, $1.47 per 100 cubic feet in the first tier, and then you can see the, the commercial tiers there as well. And then we also have the single-family irrigation and other irrigation, so again, we modified the block threshold, how much water is allowed in each block as well as what the unit cost is for each of those blocks per 100 cubic feet. RV parks, same thing. We played around with the, the block thresholds as well as the unit cost. So again, going back to the cost-based system, so each of these individual customer classes, the rates that we've got developed are reflective of what it costs to serve each of these individual customer classes, so we won't have any cross-subsidization between the classes. Option B for single-family is our low-volume user approach. So again, we're trying to encourage revenue stability, so we've got the increased base charge. But at the same time, we recognize that the lower volume users, the higher you make their base charge, the more disproportionately it affects them because that base charge isn't being diluted by the amount of water that they're, they're consuming, so a bigger part of their bill is affected by the, by the base charge. So with that, we've included an allotment of water into the base charge into this scenario. It's similar to the, the city's current approach to sewer rates. And again, we're doing away with the differential between inside and outside. So here we've got the, the proposed rates for the monthly base charge. Again, it's the same base charge, but in the case of single-family, we're including an allotment of water, which I'll get to here. So under this option, the first 500 cubic feet of water that's consumed every month, there would be no charge for that. So the base charge would go up to $9.02, but it would now include the first 500 cubic feet of water. And then you can see the additional tiers there and what the rates would be. So either Option A or Option B for a single-family, it's going to generate the same amount of revenue. The, the cost is the same in the analysis, so these rates were designed to generate the same amount of revenue. And again, these are the same rates for the other, the other And again, these are the same rates for the other, the other classes. We only had one rate option for each of them. I want to show you some sample bills here. It's important to bear in mind that when you look at a customer bill, it's going to be different from neighbor to neighbor in different parts of the city based on the customer class, the meter size, how much water you use in a given month. So you can't just say everybody's going to be impacted by X amount of dollars a month. So what we've got here is the darker purple bar on the left is what the bill would be today for a low, a medium and high user. A low user at 796 cubic feet, mid at 2866 and high at 5967. The green bar is representative of what the monthly bill would be under option A for each of those water uses. The light blue is under option B, what the bill would be for each of those options. And then the purplish on the far right is what we said was if we took the existing rate structure and increased the rates by inflation, what the inflation was every year between 2009 and 2021, what would those rates be and what would the, what would the monthly bill be had the city been keeping up with inflation throughout that period? We've also done some non residential comparisons. So we've got a couple of bars here, a larger bar at 3,123 cubic feet, a smaller one at 1641. Again, the current, the the green being the proposed and then the light purple being current with CPI. And then we've got a church, library, theater and park classification at the end. And then hotels, we've got two different hotel profiles. The first one at just shy of 56,000 cubic feet a month. The second one at just shy of 28,000. So again, same customer class, but based on the different usage, they're going to be impacted differently. How do we compare to our neighbors? This is something that we always get asked. It's something that we know everybody wants to know, but it's very, very difficult for Pat and I to put this together, as you can imagine. The cost, it depends on a number of different factors, the geographic location, how well is the system being maintained? Are you reinvesting in it every year? Or are you kicking the can down the road and only doing a knee jerk reaction to maintaining the system? All of those different things are going to affect the rates. But at the same time, everybody likes to know how they compare to their neighbors. So with that, we we've put together comparisons. So this is based on 945 cubic feet, which is about the average for a single family customer in Lake Havasu City. So we've got our Lake Havasu City current at $17.31. Option B would lower the bill a little bit to 1677. Option A would increase it a little bit to $18.47. And then the the current with CPI, that's just for informational, that's not something that we're proposing. But you can see any one of those options, the current option A or option B, you would still be at the bottom, bottom of the list here with Kingman being the next one up. Prescott was the only one that we were able to identify that would tell us that they were implementing new rates come July 1st. Some of these other ones may or may not be. So there could be some, some shifts to those numbers. With that, we'll move into sewer. So we're going to go through the same type of process. Why do we need to increase sewer rates? So similar to water, sewer is expected to have expenses exceed revenues over the next several years. We're at 3 million on sewer versus 7 million on on water. So from that perspective, sewer is in better shape than than water is. But at the same time, that doesn't mean that sewer is out of the woods and we don't need to be proactive and and raise rates going on. This would be something that if you don't take proactive measures now, you would get into that water situation where the deficit is that much higher and and more corrective action would be going on. The big thing else, also the big thing to point out with sewer is you've got more debt outstanding on the sewer side than you do on on the water side. The annual debt service in sewer is about 13.7 million dollars a year. So that really comes into play in that bottom line there, the debt service coverage of 1.2 times and the target of 1.5. We want to make sure that we are doing the proactive thing and making sure we do have revenues in place to make sure that we're meeting those coverage targets and not going into technical default on our outstanding debt. So again, the single family, we had two different rate structures, rate options that we're proposing for for sewer. Option A is stability and simplification. Those were the two big things that we took from the the homework assignment with staff. Revenue stability being the big one, the number one objective. So with that, we're proposing a flat residential rate. It provides the greatest revenue stability of the two options. It simplifies the existing rate structure. That was something else that that was very important to staff and we'll get into that in a moment. And then the other big takeaway was the eliminate the current policy of reduced rate for months of no usage. So we touched on this a little bit on the water side where we do have some part time residents here in the city. That 13.7 million dollars comes in every single year as terms of debt service that needs to get paid. It doesn't fluctuate based on whether or not those part time residents are flushing their toilets, running their shower, doing the dishwasher. That needs to get paid every month. So we wanted to make sure that we had that revenue coming in from that group to help cover our costs. So the rates themselves for the residential class right now, you have a monthly base charge of $41 a month and a flow rate of $7.30. And so that $41 currently includes your first 562 cubic feet of discharge. So that's similar to what we were talking about with option B on the water side. What we're proposing to go to is $54.25. And that's going to be a flat rate every month. So regardless of how much sewer discharge you have, it's going to be a $54.25 fee. The other thing about the current rate structure is it's based on your average winter consumption, which has caused some confusion among, among customers, not just here, but everywhere Pat and I work. It's a concept that we're familiar with in the work that we do, but it's, it's a challenging subject to to try and wrap one's heads around sometimes. The multifamily, we've got a monthly charge currently of $23.50 and a flow rate of $7.30. We're proposing to change that to 4867 monthly, again, increasing that revenue stability and a flow rate of $6.26. So much like on the water side, these volume base rates, the flow base rates are per 100 cubic feet. On the non residential side, currently you have a very long list of different customer classes, whether it's a mortuary or a restaurant or a drugstore or a library or a bookstore. So we've consolidated all of that into a general commercial slash industrial class. So you can see the the rate proposed for them would be $48.67 a month and a flow rate of $10.44. The RV park is currently charged on a per spot basis. We're recommending that continue. But again, we're shifting between the monthly charge and the flow rate to get that revenue stability so that we've increased the monthly charge. The hotel is currently charged per room. We're recommending that that stay in place. And we've got some shifting in there. And then the septic collar, you currently don't have a monthly charge, just a flow rate. So we've maintained that as well. Option B for residential is what we're calling a modified current approach. So we're, as I mentioned, your current structure is a base charge, is a minimum charge. What we're proposing though is instead of having 562 cubic feet, we're going to go to 500 cubic feet. That's how the system bills. It bills on those nice round numbers, not, not fractional numbers. So it'll make things a lot easier on the billing side for the billing department. As was the case with option A, we're doing away with the average winner consumption. So your monthly sewer bill is going to be based on your actual water flows every month as opposed to what your average is during the winter period. With that said, in eliminating the average winner consumption, part of the reason that we use AWC is to try and approximate how much of the water usage actually goes into the sewer system. If you were to base it on your July month usage, some of that's going to go to filling pools, washing cars, irrigation. So we wanted to recognize that, so we capped the flows at 750 cubic feet. So we're assuming any water use in any month above 750 cubic feet is not entering the sewer system. Therefore, you should not be charged a sewer fee for water that's not entering the sewer system. So the option B residential rate, so again, we've got a higher base charge. It's recognizing the revenue stability that we want to achieve. And then the flow rate there as well. But the flow rate is only going to be assessed in that delta between 500 cubic feet a month and 700 cubic feet a month. And again, that's on a per 100 cubic foot basis. The multifamily stays the same as does the rates for all these other customer classes on a per 100 cubic foot basis. The single family sewer rate comparisons. So again, we've got the low user at 500 cubic feet, the mid user at 1,009 and a high user at 1,423. So we've got the current on the left in the darker purple. Option A is going to be that light green, so it's going to be the same across all of these because that's our flat rate at 5425. Option B is going to be in the blue, so you can see it goes 5214. And then the last two are at 5654. And that's because the water usage is again capped at 750 and both of those monthly water uses are above 750. So we're capping them at that 750 level. And then we've got the last bar of what would the sewer rates be for each of these customers if we increased the rates by CPI every year? On the non residential sides, we've got the same comparisons. So we've got the two bars again, and then the church, library, theater, park. So you can see what their bills would be under the current and the proposed. So the bar is going to go up in both cases. The church, library, theater would go down a little bit. And then we've got our two hotels. And then the the rate comparison to our neighbors, again, the same disclaimer on trying to get an apples to apples comparison on rates. So here we have here, so currently, Lake Havasu City at $54.72 based on the average of 750 cubic feet a month. So you're in the upper half of the of the comparison here. So option A would be a little bit lower at 5425 for that fixed rate. And then option B, a little bit higher at 5654. So still within that same band of where you're at currently. In terms of what our next steps are, so we're at the public hearing right now on May 11th. And with council approval, these new rates would go into effect July 1st of this year. And with that, that's my formal presentation, so I'll answer any questions you all might have.
Excellent, thank you. Are there any questions of council, Councilmember Moses?
Thank you, Mayor. One of the most common questions I got asked is, or or concerns that I've heard from citizens is water conservation and making sure there's enough water for our city and stuff like that. Of the two water plans, would you say that option A is the most aggressive towards water conservation?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other comments or Councilmember Dolan?
Yeah, I had a question. How does it affect second meters? I've had a lot of people ask me that. A lot of, a lot of it was to avoid the sewer charges. And it seems like the rates are very similar, but they, that second meter would be paying the $9 fee. And you know, someone that has a second meter and it pencils out. And I think a decent amount of people that have desert landscaping and just a pool, it might pencil out and then they would just literally remove it. I don't know how many second meters we have in town. Is that something we are worried about that if we have an influx of those just being taken off the system? And we're losing $9.02 every month on those and they're just using their regular water? Can you give us some insight on that?
Yeah, it it is something that that we discussed with staff and they've, they've asked the same question. So I think Anthony, there was about 1,000 secondary meters, so a thousand or so irrigation meters. So that would be one of the options would be to shut off the irrigation meter and just use the one meter. At the same time though, there's a bit of a balancing act there where you would be paying currently the the $9.02 twice, one for each meter. But at the same time, you're spreading out your usage across those two meters too. So you're not rising through each individual tier as fast as you would be. If you've got one meter, then all that water is going to be going through that one meter. So you'll progress through the tiers that much faster. So with the domestic meter where you might stay in block one and two, if everything was to go through that meter, you might get up into that third or fourth. So it's, it's, it's hard to say exactly how it's going to affect each individual customer, but we certainly share your concern and it was something that we did discuss.
Yeah, Councilmember Moses.
Kind of piling on the, you know, the the dual meter. When you, when we talk about multifamily, does each, so like, let's say there's a duplex. Does each side have their own meter? Or is there just one meter per household? So will that, you know, will, but do you see where I'm going with this?
I do.
Will there be a two different base fees for for both sides of the duplex kind of deal?
Yes, so so we've seen that before too. So where where you've got one meter that's going in to serve two sides, then it's based, the the monthly base charge is based on the meter itself. So if there's one meter, it would be shared between, if you've got two separate meters going one to each side, then each side would pay the monthly base charge because it's attached to the meter itself.
All right, thank you.
So if you may, so if there is an irrigation meter that someone has now, what what will that look like for them?
So as it stands right now, so that if they if they have the separate irrigation meter, so they would have the the monthly base charge for their domestic meter, there would be the monthly base charge for their irrigation meter. And then the flows would be specific to each type of customer. So the domestic meter would pay under the single family rates and the irrigation meter would pay under the the irrigation rate structure. So going forward, that would still be the case. The base charge is going up from the $5.16 to $9.02. So you would pay $9.02 for both meters. It'd be $18.04 a month, $9 for each meter. And then the flow would continue as it is today. If that answers the question.
So you say that last statement again, what where is the $4 and something, where'd that come from? So there's $9.04.
Yeah, so they're not, the the new, the new proposed base charge is going up from $5.16 to $9.02. So you would see that increase on both meters, both on the the domestic meter, the residential meter, as well as on the irrigation meter.
Okay.
So you would continue to pay as you have today, but the rates would be higher for, for each meter.
And then where do you get the irrigation rates? I don't know if I saw that in the presentation.
Took off the.
Oh, I do see it. Yeah, I know, on page 11.
Mr. Mayor? And I think having a second meter myself, I think it kind of depends on each each person's use. I mean, I could look at my past history for the year and see what is best for me, for example, if it's worth, you know, because you also have to pay for the backflow every year to be checked out and stuff. So I mean, I think, you know, the average person with their bill could look to see, you know, what their average use is, you know, and then decide if it's worth getting rid of. I mean, I guess my concern is is we lose half of them, for example, you know, if there's a thousand of them. It doesn't sound like it's a huge, huge deal. But like for me, for example, I could look at it, do the math and see if it's worth the rates. And I can, I could tell too, the rates for, correct me if I was wrong, the rates for the second meters is the same for option A and option B. So, so like I said, I think it would kind of depend. If you have somebody that has grass and things like that, they're probably using a lot more water. They're watering a lot. If you have a lot of desert landscape, it's in a pool, then it's, you might be, you know, I I might be under that limit where, so I don't go to that next class. So.
Sure.
Yeah.
All right, any other questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I have a question. So is there a staff recommendation at this point? I know we're getting, we're getting into that point, but I'm just curious if it's.
Yeah, so the staff recommendation is based on the qualifications and kind of what the goals and objectives were to stabilize the system, make sure we had a long term, long range plan, is recommending option A, the balanced approach for water and option A, the stability and simplification for the sewer. But a lot of our discussion that we've been having at council over the last several times we've, we've had these discussions, this has been ongoing for for quite some time, has been that option B for the low volume user approach for water and option A for sewer. So where we seem to be aligned on our previous conversations with staff on sewer, we might have some different thoughts on on the water rates. Again, that's just based on our previous conversations, so.
Okay, knowing that, I'll, I'll just jump in. Like I said, that's the kind of what I'm leaning towards is I like option B, as it does help our low volume users. I wish it would have a little bit more effect on the, you know, at least the vacation rentals, the 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 summer vacation rentals and the winter vacation rentals, not, not, I'm not talking about short term, but the the ones that have a second home here, it is getting a little bit more out of them and their impact on the, on the system. You know, I still have an issue with the Airbnbs, but like I said, that's the state telling us we we can't, we can't classify whether it's a short term rental, it's, it's a residential and we have to treat it as a residential, even though it's busier than some hotels. So. It's, it's a residential and we have to treat it as a residential, even though it's busier than some hotels, so. Um, yeah, so I'm, at the moment, like I said, I'm leaning towards option B for that reason for water and uh, option A for sewer, so.
Yeah, so uh, of uh, water users, current water users based on, on the current system, about thirty percent of them use uh, five hundred or less. Uh, cubic feet, just for, for informational purposes, that they'll, they'll have that included on that option B if that is uh, the will of the council. But the, one of the goals here was obviously to build equity into the system, so you know, we have these bills that are, that are due every, every uh, month. Payroll and, and cost to do it and in all of those types of things, and so we're building equity in the system by increasing the base monthly charge on both sides. Now everybody is paying uh, their fair share for the infrastructure part of it, uh, versus just those that are here full-time uh, twelve months out of the year. So that this system uh, that's presented to us today does achieve that goal for us. And then just a, a quick reminder uh, that the irrigation and drainage district, which I know we've talked about a lot, but sometimes you're like, what's an IDD, what are we talking about here? Uh, Robert McCulloch and, and all of his innovations that he, he did, created a sod farm out on the island, which allowed him to create this IDD. Which was the, the quasi-government for Lake Havasu City uh, prior to the vote of the people in nineteen seventy-eight to incorporate. Uh, and so what that does is it contributes about five point seven million dollars to our water fund through property tax. And that's set to expire in this next year, uh, because the, the debt has um, has been eliminated. It was supposed to expire in nineteen seventy-eight by the vote of the people when uh, we voted to incorporate Lake Havasu City, but. It had debt from the initial sewer infrastructure that was built down in the uh, first areas or neighborhoods of our community. Um, and now that there is uh, the debt is going to be completely paid off, the IDD goes away, which also that five point seven million dollars. Uh, there's also uh, some talk about enterprise funds, there's lots of conversation that you hear on social media or otherwise. That people think uh, that we can use different monies for different things and that's just not the way it works, I mean, municipal government, so this is an enterprise fund. Basically, uh, the easiest way to describe is it's a nonprofit system, so rate payers pay for the cost of, of the service. And what the intent here is to ensure that we have our capital infrastructure um, outlined for the next ten years. Uh, so what pipe are we going to need, what upgrades, what lift stations, all of the things that make the system work. Um, are, are i- taken into this calculation. And then of course, the cost of, of wages and vehicles and chemicals and all of the things that we need. At the end of the day, we shake that all out, that's what your firm does, thank you. Um, and by, by shaking that all out, this is where we get these, these two different proposals, um, and uh, also solve that uh, IDD. And if you recall, just two, three, four, even five years ago, when we were talking about the, the looming expiration of this, it was um. Uh, i- it was, it was very daunting and we weren't really sure what that was going to look like and. Uh, maybe you have to go back out to the voters to vote in a different district or something along those lines. Um, and so I, I'm, I'm actually really happy with the, the results of, of what you've put together. Um, given really good options, communicated with the, with the public, uh, you, we did have a series of, of public hearings or public open houses. Um, at the aquatic center that are, have been filmed and are on the website, uh, I wish more people would have attended, but uh, but you did a good job. And I know I gave you a hard time when we uh, awarded you this contract because we just came off a consultant we didn't really like. Um, and uh, you've looked up to all of our expectations, so uh, thank you for that.
Well, thank you, it's been a pleasure working with you all and your staff.
Yeah, thank you.
Mister Mayor, I just want to add, I think you brought up a really good point is um, water and sewer is not a government service. Parks and streets are government services that we pay for with our taxes, water and sewer is not. Um, it, we're basically running a nonprofit um, utility company. So I'm, I'm, I'm glad we got to go through this process, I wish um, our electric company and um. The internet company, for example, would have to have a public meeting like this and tell them what they're doing. And how the much, much money they're spending to keep their system up and running and why they're raising our bills and how it's, you know, but we don't get that, so. Um, like I said, just to remind everybody, we are running a nonprofit utility company, we're doing this so we can break even, so we have a system that, that works. We have enough money to pay for what we need and it, and luckily the city does that, there's a lot of cities that don't run their own water sewer utility company. So I think we as a community or even though some of these numbers are a little hard to swallow and look at, it's still. Better than if it was in the private sector and, you know, we had to pay us as board of directors to make sure we're all getting paid well and the stock. People have, you get paid well, so just to kind of keep that in mind.
Yeah, and so with those uh, enterprise funds, if, if we have excess uh, sales tax collections or we have a robust year, which uh, we're experiencing. We hear people say, you know, to put that money into the water fund, put that money into the sewer fund and it, that's just not how that works, you, we can't do that. Uh, nor is it sustainable uh, for the down years, and so then we would be in an emergency situation. And if we don't plan for the capital infrastructures, we could be uh, what uh, some of the infrastructure uh, failures that you've seen um, around the country. In other communities because they didn't plan appropriately and they have um, you know, uh, bad contaminants in their water and, and failing systems, which fortunately. Uh, we're in no position for that, so. Uh, council member Lane?
Thank you, Mister Mayor, and I'm not going to reiterate what you guys said, it's, um, we've, we've beaten this horse, this is what our, our fifth. Meeting I think that we've had where, and we've said, you know, nonprofit, nonprofit, we only need enough money to sustain the system and as council member Dolan said. We, we're not in it for the profit, thank God, we don't have a for-profit company here that's, that is working with us. Uh, or against us in some cases, um, but just out of curiosity, did we ever like take a. Like take my bill, for example, and say, okay, this is what your water rate usage is. And what that would average out to, what the average person is, they're going to be, are some people going to stay the same, do you think? Some people go up just a little bit, some people are going to go down, did, did we look at those percentages of, of where that's going to be?
Uh, we did look at some different profiles, so the profiles that we had up before. Um, those were actual customers' bills and how they would be impacted, but in terms of doing. An overall assessment of every bill on the system and this is how many customers will see a zero to five percent increase, this is how many will see a ten percent decrease. We didn't, we didn't go to that level.
Okay, and then, but there are some, it's quite conceivable if they don't use a lot of water, their rates are, or bills are actually going to go down.
Absolutely.
And uh, we talk about this being a, an increase, but it's not necessarily an increase, it's. Some of them could be, depending on, you're going to be charged for the amount of water you use.
Correct.
And then a flat rate for the sewer rate, which is just enough money to cover the system.
Yeah, and we saw that in some of the examples that were up there, that some people would actually see a decrease under the proposed options.
Okay, and then the only other thing I would clarify, Mister Mayor, you talk about how that's not the way it's done and the reason it's not done that way is, it's illegal. We, we can't take money from Peter to pay Paul, that's illegal, yeah, so, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments uh, from council? Does uh, staff any other final comments before we open up uh, the public hearing?
Uh, Mister Mayor, I can, I kind of just reiterated a couple, a couple of points, uh, great job Kevin, great job Anthony, uh. Uh, the, the team behind uh, the uh, the, these efforts has been working on it for, for nine months and that's Kevin Moran and, and uh. And our customer service and, and um, Philak and, and Bill and, and our water and wastewater divisions and, and uh, Jill Olson and admin services. A lot of folks that get together um, to take a close look at what this is, not just from making sure that we have a planned approach for the next ten years. In terms of what uh, we want to have with a sustainable and, and a system that we all are able to take for granted, we want to. Uh, turn the faucet on and flush the toilet without any worries whatsoever and we've put together a, a plan to uh, to address that the best that we can. Um, so and, and I think winter averaging, we've kind of talked about a little bit too, but that, that's a big deal and that's a comment that I get probably the um, most overall. Is right now we have a system in place, for those that know it, um, I think it's between December and March, I believe, there's a couple of months there and uh. We have residents that literally call City Hall and say, when is my meter going to be read? So I know when I can, I can uh, fill the pool or take that shower or use, use water in a certain, a certain timeframe. And uh, all of that goes away, um, that usage that you'd have through that couple of months in the winter. But then dictate your sewer rates for the rest of the, uh, the rest of the year, so it's, it's a big deal. So uh, less uh, less impacts there, um, resonated to that, that, that effect. Um, what that did is, is that uh, put a disproportionate, disproportionate share of the cost on our full-time residents. Uh, and that, then we talked about uh, base amounts and winter averaging and those types of things, that meant that if I, if I'm a uh. If I come to Havasu during the summer, utilize my second vacation home in the summer. And I'm not here in December, March, uh, just, uh, December, January, uh, February, March timeframe. Um, then my sewer bill is going to be pretty cheap for the rest of the year, and when I come to Havasu in the summer months, my sewer bill is, is uh, is, is uh. Is, is at the bottom of the, bottom of the barrel compared to our full-time residents, so we want to make sure that we're looking at the system that's sustainable. But also fair in terms of the, the uh, our full-time residents, so again, we, that was, that was important to us. And we do, we talk about this as a rate increase, um, but you look at some of the numbers for some of the users, those, those rates are going down. And that doesn't account for the, the savings that, that the, the same users will see on, on the property tax side with the IDP going away. So I want to make a couple of those points, if I could reiterate and appreciate that opportunity.
Yeah, and now you can decide monthly how you want to conserve your water instead of three, three of the four months that uh, we put you in that, that area, so. Yeah, excellent, alright, well, this is a public hearing, would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Yeah, just please uh, make your way to the podium, state your name for the record and uh, you'd have uh, three minutes and the light indicator box is by Ms. Williams.
City Council Mayor, thank you, my name's Gary Brock. I haven't lived here for a long time, but the water bill is confusing, but I have basically two questions that are simple. One, you have four plans, two for water, two for sewer. When you make your decision, are you going to make it based on what is the best and cheapest for the consumer? That's my concern. Water conservation aside, I'm on a fixed income, a lot of the people here are on fixed incomes. When you raise our water rates, you raise our sewer rates, we don't get a raise. Fifteen dollar minimum wage goes up, we don't get a raise. So I want to see you guys, you're going to bring in the same amount of money, I want to make sure that you do what's best for the consumer. What's the cheapest for the consumer, who's going to get the most benefit? The second question is. If you raise more money and you get past that one point five percent, are we going to get a rebate? Or are you just going to keep the money and keep stashing it away for possible future problems? That's.
Yeah, thank you for your, for your questions, you've been at um, all the public hearings, Mister Brock, so I, I hope that you've seen this as a very fair, open and transparent process. Um, and to answer your question about uh, rebates, not a rebate, but with the rates maybe not increase in subsequent periods, absolutely. Um, as has been seen in the last twelve years of no rate increases because it wasn't necessary to do it. Um, so yeah, I think you can have confidence that uh, we'll, we'll do what's right for uh, the right payers um, at every step of the way. Knowing that we're all rate payers as well, so. Alright, anyone else like to address the city council? Alright, we, uh, I'll go ahead and close the in-person uh, call to the public, we do have several folks that did submit via uh, written comment. And Ms. Williams will read those into the record.
The first comment was received on Monday, May tenth, twenty twenty-one with the subject line of water rate change proposal item eight point one. The elimination of a flow rate unfairly aids high-flow users and unfairly penalizes low-flow users. Case in point, more and more of the residential homes in Lake Havasu City that have historically been winter homes are being used as air, Airbnbs now. These homes that traditionally had two occupants now are having anywhere from eight to fifteen people in them. At times when they are, were usually vacant, this drastically increases the water consumption and the city should be compensated for this use. When I moved to Lake Havasu City in twenty sixteen, all of my neighboring homes were owner occupied. Now there are three homes within a block of me that are being used by their new California owners as a Airbnb's. Two doors down from me, as a house that had three bedrooms in it now has five. And not a weekend goes by and sometimes an entire week that there aren't five or six cars parked on the street and in the drive. This particular Airbnb is going for nine hundred dollars per day, it would seem that it's only fair that some of that money should stay in the city. Something to consider, charge a minimum fee of thirty dollars, thirty-five dollars or forty dollars for the first two thousand gallons. Then charge a higher rate for any amount of water used over the two thousand gallon minimum. My ninety-six-year-old single neighbor who has lived in Havasu for forty-four years would benefit from this by not paying the same as some high-water users. The loss of revenue could be recovered by licensing the owners of Airbnbs, say one thousand per year. And licensing the overseers another five hundred per year for each property that they manage. You could also fine the owner for each time the police are called to the property in addition to any fine levied on the renter. This hopefully would cause a more careful screening of the renters by the owner or manager, submitted by Jim Bainbridge. The second comment was received on Friday, May seventh, twenty twenty-one with a subject line of the water sewer cost. To whom it may concern, can you people verify by fact that you did not buy Havasu Fitness with COVID funds? Because if you did, I suggest selling the building and putting those millions into the sewer system instead of recharging us all again. Recharging us because the first sewer contractor was bad and repairs had to be made, makes zero sense to me. Submitted by Diane Salmons. The next comment was received on Saturday, May eighth, twenty twenty-one with a subject line of public comment submission. Dear Lake Havasu City Council and City Clerk, please accept this email as my official submission for public comment. Regarding raising the water and sewer rates, agenda item, public hearing eight point one, ID two one dash two seven nine nine. I attended the public meeting at the aquatic center a few months ago, it was very informative and professionally presented. I truly appreciate the time, research and staff efforts to provide comprehensive information to the residents and users within the city limits. After hearing and studying the proposals, I would like to submit my request to adopt option A for water and option A for sewer. Both offer a reasonable increase for revenue stability and simplifies the existing rate structure. Not only for the city billing system, but for those city residents and users. By keeping it simple and understandable, I think you will achieve the goals you are seeking. Thank you for your consideration, if you need to contact me, I have included my information below, submitted by Diane John Johansson. The next comment was received on Saturday, May eighth, twenty twenty-one with a subject line of water and sewer rate. To Lake Havasu City Council and City Clerk regarding water and sewer proposal. I am sending this email as an official response to the public meeting that was held at the aquatic center on February nineteenth, twenty twenty-one. After hearing the proposals, I would like to submit my request to adopt option A for sewer and option A for water. The presentation was very informative and provided the information I needed to determine what would be best for our city and residents. Submitted by Robert and Kathy Thompson. The next comment was received on Tuesday, May eleventh, twenty twenty-one with a subject. Line of comment to be read at the Lake Havasu City Utility Rate Increase Public Hearing. First and foremost, I think the city has failed to be fully honest and transparent concerning the proposed utility rate increases. To fund sudden and dire water and sewer projects that the city manager should have brought to the table. Long before now and without the need for costly consultants. The city has touted that these increases will merely replace the current IDD tax, but since the IDD tax does not sunset. Until after the coming fiscal year, those residents in the IDD district will end up paying both the IDD tax and the higher utility rates. For the first year, hardly an equitable situation, a more palatable solution would be to delay the rate increase for one year. Utilize a portion of the forthcoming eleven million dollar pandemic allotment funds to offset the difference. Or dip into thirty-six million dollar water fund surplus and six million dollar sewer fund surplus. Or even pro- postpone one of the city's questionable capital improvement projects. After all, aren't the citizens of Lake Havasu just as important as a twenty-twenty vision project? The city also has not been forthcoming about the Wildens Reports' proposed utility revenue increases for subsequent years. In essence, raising base water rates an additional sixty-seven percent and sewer rates an additional nineteen percent by year nine. This is on top of the first year's seventy-four percent base rate increase for residential water. And a thirty-two percent increase in the base sewer charge for those residents that have been conserving water. In order to pay the minimum of forty dollar, forty-one per month. But based on the huge surplus fund balances projected by year five, these increases are overkill. And what about water consumption? Both proposed water rate plans do nothing to address the drought looming water allocation cuts. And sewer plan A as a flat rate program offers no incentive to discourage wanton waste, water waste. Sewer plan B is not much better, but does provide a lower base fee and escalating flow charges that can encourage water conservation. Once again, I urge a one-year postponement to both save our citizens from double taxation. And to provide time in which to devise plans which will provide both the needed funds and conservation efforts to safeguard the city's water supply for future growth. But knowing how the city loves to run roughshod over its citizens, I expect to afford ahead regardless. For this reason, I reluctantly vote that the city council adopt Plan B. Submitted by Peter Brookhausen. The next comment was received on Monday, May tenth, twenty twenty-one with a subject line of water rates. My suggestion is to have the sewer portion of the bill be charged to each, each home's property taxes so that everyone in our city is sharing the cost. It is unfair that the homes not on sewer don't pay a monthly sewer charge to share whatever being on the sewer system has done for the city. The four months of having to do our best to conserve and keep our sewer charge for the next year low is very frustrating. The four months of having to do our best to conserve and keep our sewer charge for the next year low is very frustrating. Submitted by the Beelkies. The next comment was received on Tuesday, May 11th, 2021, with the subject line of Agenda Item 21-2799, New Sewer Water Rates. I am the person that believes you have already made up your mind regardless what the public-paying customer has to say. For the record, we tiny house on a coma using monthly average 300 cubic feet in water, living here 12 months of the year, votes Option B. Thanks for asking. Submitted by Dave and Angela Schrogans.
Excellent. Thank you. Now concludes the public written comment that we have received. So several of the comments that were addressed in those written statements, I believe, were addressed during the discussion that we had earlier. A lot of the discussion about Airbnb's state law precludes us from doing anything about, but this builds equity in the system. So those that are not using their home full-time will, will be paying for the cost of the infrastructure. Some of the comments about fixed income, they'll be on that lower end depending on what the council goes on. So I believe most of those were, were addressed. All right, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion and possible motion.
Well, I, Mayor.
Yeah, Councilmember Moses.
If I can ask a question of staff?
Yes.
Just so we can clarify, one of the comments that Mr. Peter Brookhausen made about the IDD postponement, why we need to make the change now as opposed to when the IDD expires?
Yeah, Mr. Knitson.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Moses, yeah, that, I appreciate that because that's done something that we highlighted on. We talked about the expiration of the IDD and we get kind of excited about the fact that that goes away. And then we take a look at replacing that property tax assessment with the actual water charge for actual, actual use. The IDD goes away, there's one more assessment that's going to take place as of July 1st of this year, and that, that's the, the last, the last assessment. So we're going to have basically next 12 months will be an increase in the water rates. And then we'll, one more, one last year of the IDD assessment. The reason why we chose to go in that direction is to get ahead of that is, is again, we look at the 10 years and try to identify how we sustain the, the water system, the dollars it takes. If we waited one year and waited for the IDD to expire, we could increase the rates at that point. But the, that jump would be higher by waiting that 12 months than it would be for, for next year. So it's, we're kind of easing into the, the need for the, the system to kind of pay for itself outside of the IDD. If that, that makes sense.
So e- even though we're increasing fairly early, we're not even increasing as much as we would have needed to had we waited.
If you look over the long term, over the course of, of a couple of years, it's, it's the, the same impact for the funding of the system either way. Either we, we could do it now in, in terms of the approach that we're talking about, or if we waited another year, then the increase would be higher for next year. So again, kind of easing it into that, that situation. But over the course of several years, you look at that, the total, the total cost, it's, it's the same number.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Are there any other comments or questions?
I'd, I'd like to make a comment because we, we've all kind of spoke about our favorites and, and where we see this might be going. I, I recognize that Mr. Brock's comment that, you know, we need to make sure we're getting the cheapest possible thing we can do. I think if we could go with water option A on the first one and still maintain our, our water conservation goal, and then go with option B on the sewer, the, the net between the decrease on the sewer for the low-volume user and the increase, the slight increase on water option, on water option A, which is only, which was a difference of a dollar, you'd actually be lowering the bill and maintaining our goal of water conservation. So that would be what I would like to propose if we get to that moment.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Councilmember Dolan.
I guess the question, yeah, I'm, I'm all for water conservation. But I guess my question maybe to staff or to our consultant is what, like, how better is A versus B when it comes to water? Is it so minuscule, it's not worth it? I mean, because I, like I said, to answer Mr. Brock's question, you know, we serve all the residents of Havasu. But like I said, we do have, you know, this is going to be an increase at some point to some people. I do feel the need with housing prices going the way they are and such that we do need to protect our lower income, lower, you know, the, but fixed budgets. Also too by, and it is, it's kind of hard to also try to then get some of the vacation rentals or in some of the, you know, the, the California residents that have a second home to get them to pay a little bit more, more fair share as well. But I mean, just looking at the, the rate comparisons, you know, it does look like the lower user, option B and option B in both of them really does. I mean, even if it's a dollar or two in one direction down, it, it does help the low user. And like I said, even if you look at the mid-user with the sewer, I mean, it's, you know, option B is a dollar, $2 more, you know what I mean? So I'm, I, after this discussion, I think I might be leaning to, I guess, and then maybe staff could answer the question as far as that water conservation, how that does affect A versus B for the water. I do believe A and B, or B and B options do protect our low users. So I guess maybe the staff or we could maybe answer that water conservation and how, what the difference would be between A and B with water conservation is.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Dolan, I think Kevin is able, he's got that slide. So if Steve in the back, if you're able to kind of put the PowerPoint presentation back up, I think that may be helpful for you, Kevin. You could talk about that. And I, I think that you made a great point, if I could enhance that for half a second, is that we talk about trying to address certain demographics within the community. I mean, how do we address that and, and look at that? So if it's, maybe it's the retirees within the community or those that are the, that work in, in the tourism industry that, that are having real difficulty right now trying to find housing and workforce housing and affordable housing are, are issues that we're dealing with all the time. And then we talk about maybe that small family before, how do we address some of these issues? But every time we talk about it, we're not able to take a demographic and say, okay, we're, if you are, meet this age criteria or if you have this income level, then, then your rate is this. It doesn't work that way. It's purely by usage. So in some cases, we have situations where we have a number of roommates because they can't afford to buy a house on their own. So, but there's a lot of people in that house. Those are high-volume users. We're trying to give those folks a break, but how do you do that? And then you look at maybe as small families with maybe a retired couple that's, that's in the house. They'd be a low-volume user. So there's a hit on that point in terms of how we address that. Those are some of the impacts that we talked about for the last nine months.
Yeah, so in both cases, we've got four tiers for the single-family rate structure. So we've got Option A up there right now. So if you look at where we're at today versus what we're proposing under this option, so we've tightened the first two tiers, if you will, so you get less water in the first two tiers. So the first tier is going down, but the, the rate in the second tier is going up. So by doing that, we're placing a little bit higher cost on that second tier. So we're trying to encourage some conservation in there. So if we look at this right now, you've got roughly 36% of your use would be under Tier 1 for Option A, and then another 39% of use would fall under Tier 2. So by the time you get through the 2,400 cubic feet a month, you've accounted for about 75% of your customers. So then the bottom 25% are going to be falling into those upper tiers where we're paying that higher rate. And then if I go to Option B, so again, we've still got the four tiers here. So in this case, we've, we've increased the width of the tier. So you get more water use in tiers 2, 3, and 4. So under, under this option, you really don't hit that highest rate until you're over 10,000 cubic feet a month. And in looking at this, so Tier 1 would capture about 11% of water use. Tier 2 would capture 77% of water use. So in this case, by the time you get through Tier 2, you've accounted for 88% of your water use as opposed to 75% under Option A. So you're moving through those tiers faster under Option A and getting that price signal sooner under Option A than you would be under, under Option B.
So Option A, it was, encourages conservation, conservation more than Option B?
It does, yeah. A little bit.
I, it does, but it's not like it's, well, it's a huge savings. It's, 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 to me, it's a little bit marginal. I, I don't know if people are, you know, they're going to say, you know, you go from 174 to 188. So what, 12 cents per every 100 cubic, cubic feet? It's a dollar 20 if you use an extra 1,000 cubic feet. Oh, I use, I mean, my family, I think we average in the house is 700 cubic feet. And I'm, there's four of us and there's three girls in the house. So I mean, to go to another 1,000 or 2,000, I mean, I, we'll save a dollar this month if we don't use that extra 1,000. I, I don't know if that's really that substantial, I guess, in my opinion, so.
Right. And, and that was part of the balancing act that we were trying to do. And I think we've mentioned this before, if we were going for 100% revenue stability, that $9 base charge that we're proposing would be $20 or $25. If we were going strictly the conservation-oriented approach, we would have a base charge of $2 a month and everything would be in the volume and the, the rates for the individual tiers would be that much higher. So in the balancing act that we did, you're right, there isn't a whole lot of difference in terms of the conservation message between A and B, but A is a bit stronger than, than B is.
And, and I know that rate, you know, it, you, we were saying it's marginal and it's marginal now at 50,000. Well, it's going to get a little stronger at 60,000 if we go to that. It's going to get a little bit stronger at 70,000 if we grow to that. And if we, you know, we're supposedly allotted enough water for 90,000 people, once you get to 90,000 people, that marginal rate is now a fairly significant savings too. I, I think protecting our future as well as, in, in accomplishing our goal of actually lowering the, the cost to consumer for the lowest volume user by accepting water at A and sewer at B, that's the best of both worlds in my, in my book.
All right. Councilmember Lain.
Thank you. So whichever rate we go with, we'll be able to make ends meet.
Correct.
So, so we're, we, we know that. So then you look at the charts that you've completed for us, and the way I'm looking at it is with Option B for the water rates makes it the least amount of money spent by the consumer. And Option A on the sewer rates makes it the least amount of money for the consumer. Is that correct? So for the, for the Option B, the low user will use $52. The average is $52.14. So that's, it's only a couple of dollars less, but to some people, a couple of dollars is a lot of money. You know, $2 here, $2 there, you know, it adds up to $10. So to me, it seems like to help the consumer, Option B for water, Option A for sewer is going to save people the most amount of money and still make our ends meet. It may not help us conservation as much, but as Mr. Dolan pointed out, it's not that big of a difference for conservation. Just my thoughts.
Mr. Lane, can I comment?
Yeah, Councilmember Campbell.
Yes, I agree that that's the least expensive route for all of our consumers. And there's been talk about conservation, but as if I am a conservative person and I'm trying to stay on flat rate, and I tell my family, let's really work hard to stay under that 500 so they're all absorbent within our flat rate. And I know that's my monthly payment moving forward, no matter what. I think there might be some conservation from slipping to another level and another level based on that as well. I think all of these options that we have in front of us are outstanding. I agree with Mayor that we went into this thinking it was going to look a lot worse than it did. And at the end, I think, once the consumers really understand all the avenues that we're dealing with here, that they might not, I know that they're, they don't trust and they're concerned and they assume that we're out to get them. But I think in the long run, once, like I did, research every avenue of it, and if you see those pricing charts, a lot of people are going to even be paying less. And as when you look at the water rate studies to find out that for our city, we're substantially lower than everybody else, maybe not on sewer, but we do have a brand-new sewer infrastructure that we are paying debt for. So I want to thank all the staff and everybody that's been involved in this. You guys have done an outstanding job and thank you. And I think whatever the council ends up deciding on these four options is going to be a real positive direction for our, our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Campbell.
Can I just ask a question? I know Councilmember Lane was, if we look at just the price, Option B and B is the prices. I knew we were talking about Option A, but if we're looking at just the rates being the lowest, it's Option B and Option B. If you look at the charts.
It, it's Option B for water and Option A for sewer, with the exception of the low-water user on sewer, it would be a couple of dollars more.
Yeah, but like I said, if you also add them, if you add them together, the, their water and the sewer, which is on the bill, Option B is still going to be the lower option, what appears on here for everybody. I got both of them pulled up here. Options, so if you look at the sewer, the way I pulled up, it's $2 cheaper for Option B, and it's $2 more for the other options. If you look at the water rate comparison, it's $2 cheaper for Option B for the low user. It's $4 cheaper for the option B user, and it's $6 cheaper for the high user. So if you add those together, it's still, if you look at the mid, low, mid, and user, it's still cheaper with Bs across the board. So if you look here, the mid-user, for the, for the sewer, mid-user's paying $2 more and the high user's paying $2 more. But here, the mid-user's saving $4 with Option B, and they're saving about $6 with Option B for the high user. So must I misunderstand that?
So on, on water, and then if you add the sewer is where you're saying that's less?
Yeah, both of them. Like I said, if our true goal is to keep the rates down as low as we can by still achieving our goals, unless I'm reading it wrong, Option B serves both, both of those purposes. But unless I'm understanding it wrong. Because if we can agree here on this report, Option B pays less than everybody than Option A. If we go back to sewer, the only one that pays, you know, the mid-user and the high user pay $2 more for sewer. If your low, low user's $2 cheaper than, on B than it is A. Mid-user's $2 more for Option B, and it's $2 more, but if you factor that in for what the water uses are.
So you're suggesting that it's lower for Option B?
B across the board is what, is what, what it looks like if it's.
Kevin, do you have any thoughts on that? I, I can't calculate with all these screens here. I can find another screen move, so.
Yeah, sorry. So, so Councilmember Dolan's correct on the, on the mid and high user. So here, the, the mid and high users on the sewer side are paying about $2, a little over $2 more on their sewer side. But then if we flip back, sorry, to, to the water side, the mid and high users here, they're paying about $4 more for the mid-user and $6 more for the high user under Option A. So in that case, B and B would benefit the high users more. On the low-user side, under Option A, for water, the, the, the low-user would be costing a little over $2 more on that, and it would be about $2 more for Option B on the sewer side. So they're kind of almost washing a little bit. So the Option B and B is definitely going to be better, the more water you use, the more sewer flow you have.
If you look at it, Option A is, for sewer is 54. So they say, the low user saves $2 using Option B. You said that they, we, we charge them $2 more. We save them $2 more.
All right, so Councilmember Campbell, are you now on Option B and B, B for water, B for sewer? Is what your thoughts are?
I'm thinking we're talking dollars and cents on those either way. Like I said, both, all options are great. But yeah, there's a couple of dollars there that I see that Councilman Dolan is discussing. If we went B and B or B and A, that's what, I'd be perfectly happy with either one of those, is which way. As long as it's the cheapest for the consumer, the low-end consumer, consumer is where I'm, I'm leaning toward. for the consumer, the low end consumer, consumer is where I'm, I'm leaning towards. Whatever those numbers are, that's the direction I would like to lean towards.
All right, would anyone like to entertain or propose a motion?
I'd like to propose motion for B and B unless anybody has any, wants to do any, I'm totally fine for more discussion with it, but.
So are you going to make a motion? Then we can discuss it from there.
I'll be with you in one second when I get to that screen. There we go. Mayor, motion?
Please.
I move to adopt rate increase option B for water and option B for sewer effective July first, two thousand twenty-one.
I will second.
I second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Motion from Councilmember Dolan and a second from Councilmember Campbell. Is there any further discussion? All right, we are ready to vote. Councilmember Lynn?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries six to one.
Thank you. All right. And again, thank you, Kevin, for all of your work and Pat, who joined us on the phone. We didn't hear much from her today, but thank you for all your work and the team. All right, moving on to the next item on the agenda. Item eight point two is award bid for the sale of city owned property, tract twenty-two eighteen, block five, parcel A, located at three nine nine five Arrowhead Drive to C C Nash, A P N one 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 dash two zero dash two six two. Mr. Schmeling?
Now it is. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council again. All right, this item is a land sale for a property on Arrowhead Drive. But we'll, we'll give a little background so that you're, you're kind of more aware of how this is coming to you. In, in two thousand seven, it's two thousand six and seven, when the economy was doing well, the city staff had a lot of inquiries for city properties, city properties to be sold. In two thousand eight, in February two thousand eight, council adopted a, a code, a chapter two, or eight point two four entitled the sale of certain public properties. And what that did is that established a program for disposal of those, of those types of assets that were no longer needed for government purposes. And what that did is it created an application and it, it, we, we post site, the site as a result of that, we notify property owners within three hundred feet. We post and display ads in the newspaper as well as other locations. And at that time, we had a sealed bid process, but now we've updated that to hold an online auction. But more importantly, what it did is we evaluated all the properties at that time. We created a list of properties available for sale. We don't go out and market those properties necessarily. However, some people are aware of them. I'm sure you've all seen the list. That list to is total about sixty-nine properties now, thirty-six of which are the little twenty foot strips that you see come before you quite often. They're twenty foot by two hundred and fifty foot. Typically, we sell those to the adjacent property owners. But the remaining parcels on that list range in size from eight tenths of an acre to six point eight nine acres. And then we have one parcel, the Kiwa ponds, that's, that's just over ten acres. Now for this particular sale, the, the subject property is located in the extreme southeast area of the community. You can see the aerial photo here, the properties boarded by Arizona Boulevard, Montezuma, Mojave Drive, as well as Arrowhead. This is a copy of the track map. Many of the parcels that, that we see come for sale are, are similar to this. They're usually between four and, and six, seven acres and they take on this shape. Typically, a large piece of property in the middle of an entire neighborhood and traditionally they have one thirty foot access. And I put the addresses there because quite often, just as you casually drive through the neighborhood, you can't see these entrances because they're not maintained typically, or in some cases, they're encroached on by the neighbors. It's, they're just difficult to find. So in this particular ca- case, excuse me, the, the driveway is between thirty-nine ninety-one and four thousand one Arrowhead. And here's the particulars of this case. It's located on Arrowhead Drive, six point four seven acres. It's currently zoned R one, single family residential. Some of the requirements in, in that district are a minimum lot size of ten thousand square feet, density of between zero and four, four point five units per acre. The allowed uses within the single family district not only include single family detached, but also vacation rentals, daycare facilities, elementary schools, secondary schools, open parks, playgrounds, community gardens, public utility facilities. Those are things that could be developed on the property as immediately. There's also a couple of conditional uses that are allowed, which would take Planning Commission approval. Those are religious and telecommunications facilities. The appraised value for this particular property was two hundred and ninety-eight thousand. We had an online auction from March fourth to April fifth. The high bid was four hundred and seventy-five thousand. And staff has asked the successful bidders to be in the audience this evening in case you have questions of them. That concludes my portion. If you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer those.
Great, thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Schmeling?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Lynn?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Then that entranceway where the property goes into the property, they're either one of those neighbors, did they have anything to say about that?
Staff did not receive any comments on this particular item.
Okay. And then another question, I'm looking at the photograph here, is that property a little bit higher up on top? So that if, if somebody was to build on that, would they, would they have a problem with like, I guess, drainage or like even like, would that, if somebody built something in there, would that look above those other homes around there?
I can't speak to the potential drainage problems on this particular piece of property that some portion of this height or some portion of this site are higher than some of the surrounding properties. However, if any development were to occur on the property, they, there would obviously be grading that took place and that would have to be reviewed through staff procedures.
Okay. And then the following slide that you showed about what they can use it for. So I'm just curious, I, I'm not really familiar with all this planning and zoning thing. Could somebody come in there and build a bunch of little houses? Or, because what I was seeing there was for just one residential house, a single family, could somebody come in here and build a bunch of tiny homes in here?
Not without some kind of approval process. At this point, the lot, the parcel is what it is, it's zoned R one. Any one of those allowed uses that's up on the screen right now can be, can be developed. But if it's anything beyond a single family, that would traditionally require some form of review, whether it's subdivision review, whether it's rezoning. Those would all end up coming before the Planning Commission and the council as well.
Okay. And the, the, the proposed, the proposed buyer or did they already purchase already, did they, did they give us any idea what they want to do with this?
Some have mentioned to staff what their intent is, but most of them do not. We're not, I, I mean, we had a lot of people approach us and ask us questions about the potential developability of these sites. However, we don't, we don't know who's going to win the auction.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Schmeling, you mentioned that the successful bidder was asked to be here. Are they here for this particular property? Maybe they can answer Councilmember Lynn's question?
I don't know.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a quick question?
Oh, yeah, yeah, Councilmember Lynn, if you could come to the microphone. Councilmember Lynn was asking what your intentions were for this property, if, if we were to approve it tonight?
Of residential homes.
Okay.
Homes, clarify.
Okay. So does that answer your question, Councilmember Lynn?
Yeah, but if they decided to do homes, that would mean they would have to come and get, come back in front of zoning again, right?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, okay, thanks.
Mr. Mayor, I have one question for, to start with, Kelly, our city attorney, can some of those lots claim eminent domain and then ruin that access to it? I mean, is that something that has to be verified prior to selling it? Or if someone has a wall there or has been using it, can they claim eminent domain on it after all these years?
Not eminent domain. That would be something that the city or government would claim. I don't know if they could claim some other type of abatement by necessity or not by necessity, but like squatting type of rights, but I, I mean, nobody's claiming that as far as I'm aware.
Okay. I guess, I guess my, my biggest issue is, you know, for the, for the three buyers, you're buying a, I mean, I'm assuming all, are all three, I know we're talking about all three of them, but all three of them are one.
That is correct. They're all three zoned.
You know, you're, we're buying an R, R one lot. So, you know, with this approval or not approval is we're allowing you to buy a lot or we're agreeing to sell the lot, but it's zoned for an R, one R one house or those other uses. So, you know, my concern is, is when it comes back, is that not, if it comes back to council for anything, then long, you know, even if they wanted to subdivide the lot into different parcels, they still have to come to council for that. Am I correct?
That is correct.
Okay. I'm hearing no's somewhere. Is that not?
It does, yeah. Any, any land use change would have to come through.
Yeah, so it's, so it's, so just clarify, it's zoned R one, it doesn't mean you can put fifty R, R one houses on it. You can only put, it's, it's one property. So right now, the way it's zoned, you can only put one house on it. Am I, do I understand that right, Kelly? Hold on, hold on, hold on. Okay, hold on.
Mr. Mayor.
I'm kind of directed to Kelly and, and the, and Stuart, just to make sure I understand this. They can, right now, if they buy this without coming back to the city, they can put one house on that.
As, as it exists currently, they could, they could go through a lot split process, which is a process that goes through city staff, not necessarily to the city council level. But anything in addition to that.
So a lot split wouldn't necessarily, so a lot split wouldn't come to council.
Nope, lots splits don't go to council. So that is a process that has to go through staff. So they couldn't automatically do that. If someone wants to develop it as one large lot, they could develop it as one large lot with one, one residence and whatever, maybe accessory to that. But if they wanted to split the lot into two, then they could go through a lot split process, which comes back to city staff.
And that does not go to council.
That does not go to council. Now, if they wanted to develop it into several different lots.
So three or more lots has to come directly to council?
Correct. That would go through a process that would eventually include city council.
So I guess that's my only comment to all the buyers is, you know, you kind of buy it at that risk if when you come back to council and want to split it to anything bigger than three lots. My mind's has set precedent in the past. We have had a lot of, you know, tiny homes or this, want to put it in some of these lots and the neighbors aren't, aren't for it. And we've seen that council has, has respected their wishes. Because like I said, they have lived behind an R one lot since they bought it and it's still an R one lot. But I guess my biggest concern is, you know, if we're going to see, be subdivided into, you know, into, you know, I guess, at least with yours specifically, if we're talking about there's going to be R one houses, well, then I guess we'd see when it came to council later that, you know, are we putting streets in? Are they being handed over to the city? How is that whole process going? I know with this lot, I've had a few people approach me about drainage issues over the past many years that the city has helped fix and do stuff. Someone had told me that if, if they were to do it, it would take a half a million dollar drainage plan to even get it passed to the city is what this person told me. I don't know if that's true. I just know that, you know, I'd like to remind people that just because we sell it, you're buying it as a single family residence, residence. If it's anything more than that, you know, we still have to go through that process. And, you know, I for one, I'd be very skeptical of, of, of what's put, you know, I'd almost like to see a P D in place or something that protects it before we sell something and it's out there. But knowing that it still has to come back to council for us to approve a lot split over three. And I think on a six acre house, a six acre lot, I think if there's two houses, I'm fine with that going just to staff. But if it's three or more, it does come back to council. But I guess that's just my only, you know, I'm fine with the selling of the property, but as far as the future development, I know hearing a lot of comments out there, but when call the public, please come up and we can definitely talk about it. So that's just the only thing I want to put out there to all three people that we're talking about today is you're buying an R one lot. That's what you get. You know, if you want to come back and, and, and turn it into a hundred RV spots, you know, you still got to come to council and, and we have all these processes in place and everyone gets to, you know, make calls to the public and, and then we get to consider that and give it a thumbs up or thumbs down. So basically just put out there, we're, we're discussing buying the, selling the property, not zoning the property. Zoning it is something we'd, so you could tell us you're doing one thing now, but you still have to come back and zone it and get approval at that point and go through the public process. So I guess I'm generally, unless you hear more, so I'm generally okay with the selling of the property, as long as we know that, I understand the process better, that we can't just, you know, tomorrow, there's a permit to put fifty small homes on there and the neighbors are not respected and they're just, you know, input. So, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, Councilmember Lynn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate that. I just wanted to confirm because I'm looking at the zoning R one and it says that you can put up to four and a half units per acre, which tells me for zoning of R one, you could pull it about twenty-four houses on this property. But they still have to come to us to get approval to do that because they would be splitting the lot twenty-four times.
Subdivide, they'd be subdividing. So they'd have to go through the subdivision process.
Okay. Then the next question I have is for Stuart. The access to this property, is that only wide enough for a driveway or is it wide enough for a two lane street?
That thirty foot axis, which is very common on these, on these properties, i- is wide enough for a, a two-way driveway, if you will, or, or a private street, which we've had several of those developments in the past. Request of a private street, but it's not wide enough for a public street. I believe the smallest right of way width for a cul-de-sac is fifty feet.
So if, if somebody was to purchase the property and turn it into a subdivision, that all those streets would be their, a homeowner's association and would not come back to the city?
Correct. It would have to be a private unless they had at least fifty foot of frontage, which one of these properties that you'll see coming later has ninety foot of frontage.
Right, but this one, I'm, I'm just talking about this one. This one is not.
This one has thirty.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. So when it comes fundamentally to the policy that Mr. Schmeling went over in two thousand and eight, I'm opposed to the, to selling land for our city assets. You know, like Havasu City is only fifty years old. So we're, we're still a pretty small community. And who knows what we're going to need for, for open spaces or, or other needs in our community. However, I'm not opposed to, to strategic land purchases. So if we had a need financially, that we needed to sell parcels for, for, to balance the city budget or something along those lines, that would be a separate conversation. If there was an adjacent land owner that needed the additional acreage or additional foot, uh, square footage to do whatever it is they need, an accessory structure, they expand their building, whatever that might look like, that I, I'm open to that. We recently sold some land, I believe, on Hunter Lane, which was a regular lot that was properly ready to go next doors to somebody not behind their house. I don't think that these flag lots, I guess they might be called, or these original McCulloch leftover pieces, that now is the time to sell them unless it was a strategic purchase or a strategic sale, where we sold one parcel to be able to purchase another parcel for use within our community. So I'm, I'm just, I'm not supportive of, of selling these parcels at all. I think that the future of Lake Havasu City is going to want green space or open space or other space that we don't even know about yet. And I think it's short sighted for us to do it now when there's no need. There's no financial need for us. We don't need the additional property for the tax rolls. I mean, there just is no need and it's going to interrupt all of the neighborhoods where these sites live. So that's my position on, on, on these land sales. If it's not strategic in that nature, again, with a joint property owner that, that has the holding already or some other strategic use. But are there other comments from council? Vice Mayor, yeah, Vice Mayor Coke?
Um, I, I would just, this is always tricky. More comments prior to this council meeting regarding concerns of people in communities or in the community and the areas where these lots are, concerns for drainage, concerns for disruption, concerns for safety vehicles to be able to go. And we've heard this over and over in the last couple, in the last year especially for different properties. So a lot of the people in these areas are very hesitant about why the city's selling these properties if we don't absolutely have to, just because of what it, the impact it's going to have on their, their home life and their community or their area in the community. So I, I've just, I've had a lot of people reach out to me on these particular issues, especially since the last couple that have come to council. So it is a concern.
Thank you. Other questions or comments?
Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Campbell?
On this one, I have a lot of concern about the road infrastructure and how it'll intermingle with the rest of the neighborhoods, the roads, the streets. When we do plan development and we do roadways, as we know, we usually have traffic plans in place. And again, if this is just one residential home on a flag lot, that's, seems perfectly fine with me. But again, applicant has. on a flag lot, that's seems perfectly fine with me. But again, uh applicant has all optical rights to subdivide this property as she deems and make this all private driveway. Only concern is the bottleneck, all the traffic conclusions that we have throughout the city that aren't highly planned out. Some of our, our, as you know, some of our infrastructure plans are thought out five years in advance. So the only thing that I see with this particular plan that I'm concerned about is we're just might be faced with a massive traffic infrastructure problem right in that neighborhood.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments of council?
Uh, it is hard. I think we're keep, we're talking about not selling any land is, is kind of hard. Um, you know, it, but each land's different, you know, we're comparing apples to oranges. I mean, a lot that someone wants to develop and put a bunch of houses on or tiny homes or an RV park is different than someone want, maybe want to buy a piece of land to connect another piece of land. But you know, like I said, it's like we, we set a precedent with, with one, you know, um, you know, if that's the case, then it's the one size fits all for not selling land. But I mean, there is some land that is completely useless to the city. Um, but like I said, if you've lived, lived behind it for five, ten, fifteen, twenty years and you knew it was a city owned and it was R one, well, they won't sell it. But at least if they sell it, it's an R one. They can only put a house up there or two houses. And next thing you know, you're living behind a RV park or something that, you know, or a condo of some sort and, you know, I get. It is a hard situation, like I said, because not each, not each lot is different. Um, you know, six acres versus one acre versus maybe a flag lot that, you know, could be bought and turned into a single family home or simply split and put into a, you know, two homes and nobody in the neighborhood cares. You know, but I mean, I, I think this one, for example, you know, we have got some feedback back, you know, that the neighbors don't want it and they're concerned about draining issues and you know, I guess like we have to decide, do we just look at it one by one or do we just look at it as a whole if we're selling or not selling. So.
Yeah. From my, my perspective, we have a, a, a system in place and I think that uh we focus on properties that are strategic that, that makes sense. There are some parcels that we don't need and will never use again in the future. Um, and then that's, that's well known and, and parcels that are right next to an adjoining landowner. Uh, they can take a look uh at that. So I think keep the process in, in, in place, but these large multi-acre uh lots that are in the center of neighborhoods uh don't fit that at all. And so I don't support selling those. Uh, but I don't say we don't sell assets that make sense for the city or for um, uh certain neighborhoods. So that's why we go through this process and it's uncomfortable and awkward and, and we have the conversation and we decide what to do and what's best for, for Lake Havasu City going forward.
If, if this isn't a strategic uh sell, why is it for sale?
There's, there's a list of city-owned assets that we uh don't have a need for that people can petition. So it sounds like we put a for sale sign and said, hey, come buy this.
And, 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 and I, I understand all the concerns on this property. And, and I too have had a lot of similar conversations and, and, and I have shared some of those concerns. I, I, but at the same time, I also worry about the the, you know, the developer that has incurred costs to, to go through this whole process. Just like, well, if it wasn't, if it's not for sale, then why is it for sale? Uh, I guess maybe I don't understand the process or.
I think depending on the outcome of, of this discussion and this vote, um, that uh city staff will have better direction of the will of the council. Um, uh, when they're talking with people that have interest in uh petitioning the city for certain land assets in the future.
Okay. And, and then also if I had a, a question for Stuart as well, just so I can understand, uh, fundamentally, this seems like a a very similar situation that we had not two or three council sessions ago, where we were actually going through the process of splitting up one lot into four or five lots that is going to meet all the criteria that it's zoned for. Fundamentally, what is the difference between that that was approved and this that um mayor and it may not be approved?
Fundamentally, there's really no difference. In that case, um, you saw a, a large lot that was privately held. Um, they have the right to subdivide it. They met the code requirements for the minimum lot size and that, and, and that came before you as a, as um subdivision. Um, this is obviously a little bit larger lot um where more parcels could be divided out of it. Um, but, but fundamentally, it's, it's very similar or the same. And I would, I would suggest that more than likely, if these are sold, you're going to see something very similar to that scenario.
Right. And, and I, if I were a developer, moving the goalpost um would be a little disheartening and a little frustrating. Um, if, you know what I mean? We, we talked about precedents and I know it, not every situation is the same. But uh, I just wouldn't want to waste people's, my, one of my biggest pet peeves is wasting time. And I wouldn't want to waste any of our developers' time if this lot is not suitable to be built on. I wouldn't want to go through, I, I would hopefully, if we can help save the developers' time in the process beforehand, before we have to have a public hearing about it and all that's good stuff. So, thank you, Stuart, for your comments.
Councilmember Lee?
Thank you, sir. Um, Stuart, and I was, and I don't know the facts on this, but I have heard that there was some drainage issues on, on this property at one point.
Um, yes, specifically around the entrance of this property, uh, there is a, let's see if I can go back here to that. Um, at four thousand one. Uh, and eh, there is a vacant lot here where the natural drainage course kind of takes you through the back portion of this lot. Um, so there is, eh, there have been some minor improvements made along here to help divert that water into um, our thirty foot driveway access. In addition, there's, uh, there's a pool on this property, if I recall, in the backyard, which sits about four feet lower than, than this hillside here along this stretch. And we, we had several instances where after a rain uh that our property drained directly into this individual's pool. And so i- if you happen to go out on the site, you've seen where a little, uh, a little dam or a little berm has been constructed along here. Uh, so we made some minor adjustments in the past to try to control some of that drainage. Uh, but one of the, one of the um uh recommendations as part of the sale or caveats was that the buyer will then be responsible for the drainage issues. So any development that comes to us um will be reviewed for that to assure that those drainage issues are taken care of.
Would you have a, an estimated cost on what, what it would take to handle the drainage issues going forward on this property?
Absolutely no idea.
So it's buyer beware that uh it, this could be a strategic sale for the property because it sounds like this piece of property may actually be a drainage issue. We're getting rid of the property. We don't have to worry about it anymore. It's your problem now. You bought it. It's yours. So, I mean, that's playing devil's advocate there, but it, it could definitely um, be a, you want to make sure you're aware of it now so we don't get sued later. So, because that's a, I've heard estimates of over half a million dollars just to fix the drainage issues on this piece of property. So whether that's true or not, I have no idea. But, thank you.
Are there any additions?
Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Campbell?
Yes, I have to agree with Councilmember Moses that uh proper direction, like Mayor said, to the staff moving forward is really important because not only does it waste our time, it wastes the developers' time and energy, the auctioneers, the staff. And so it would be really good, this next process on some of these lots to really get a real good idea of what we all want. And I have learned through constructing on flag lots, every time I do construction on a flag lot, I disrupt all the neighborhoods backyards and their pools and I get complained at more than anything. So when it comes to these flag lots, they're just really tricky to develop anyways. So I, you know, again, this goes to the applicant. This, if we pass this today, this burden lies on her. And that's what we need to decide today. If this is what we want to do to her or anybody else forward.
Yeah. One of the, uh, the comments that I'm hearing from council is that uh it's R one and, and, you know, buyer beware, it's R one, we're not going to change it. I don't feel comfortable moving forward in the interest of, of saving our time if we're not, if we're not going to pass um a, a future land action that's going to be asked of, of the, the council on top of it. So, um, you know, we, we basically sell, uh, sell it uh to land and say, we're not going to let you do anything with this R one, which is, is, you know, not a good situation either. So really, it's today's conversation that's going to set the tone for the future on how, how this happens. Um, and, you know, give Mr. Schmeling and Mr. Knudsen and the, and the team direction on, on what parcels are truly available uh to sell that are, are, are part of our holdings and which ones are not.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Dola?
Um, I agree with you to a point on that. I, I, that's where I just want to make sure we say buyer beware. I mean, we are buying, if you buy it, it's an R one lot that you can either build a single house on or you can build an elementary school or whatever it said. Um, or split it and do two houses. So if you have a six acre lot and you can put two houses on your six acre lot, then if that's what you're investing it for and that's what we advertise it as, that's what it's being advertised as, then, then great. If it's buyer beware is if you're planning to put big development on it and your neighbors aren't going to be, you know, there's some of these, uh, it looks like there's thirty, about thirty neighbors surrounding at least the two big lots. And I'm assuming half that on the other, the smaller lot is, you know, we've seen that before. And that's a little frustrating that we have these buying meetings and there, we have these buyers, but there's no like, if there's a zoning change, we'd have a zoning meeting, everybody would come out and we'd hear everybody's voice. We'd know going into making a decision. We haven't done that with the buying process. Um, but we have put the selling process out there. We've gone through all this. We've advertised it. We've done that. Like I said, I'm fine with selling them the way they are as R one. If you're buying a six acre R one lot. You know, like I said, what I'm not comfortable with is a development or, or it's something to that level or inner, messing with the neighbors' views and, you know, I mean, when, when you come back to do that, anything above what it is zoned right now, that's where I would be a no at that point unless, like I said, unless all the neighbors came in and said, oh yeah, we think this is a great idea and none of the, the neighbors cared. Well, then great. Everyone is favored for it. But if then you start having zoning changes and meetings and the neighbors are all again, just like we've seen with a couple other places. Um, you know, nothing personal, tiny houses, it's just that neighborhood didn't want it. We, you know, they, they built nice tiny houses on, in, in the right zoning area where they bought the, they bought the property zoned properly from the beginning. There's a bunch of them on Lake Havasu Avenue. Great. Well, it's zoned for that. You know that when you buy it. But so my point is, like I said, if I vote yes for selling, you're buying an R one lot and you want to put a house on it, great. You want to do any more than that, the neighbors are going to have to, they're going to have a say and the community is going to have a say. And, and I, I'd be very, uh, that's where I see, I, I think the no we want to say right now is what we're all super scared about what's going to go there. And I'm afraid that no might be coming later. So I, it is that buyer beware is you may be buying a five hundred thousand dollar single family home lot that you've, you know, maybe you split it and put two houses on it or one hundred and seventy-five thousand or whatever the different prices are. You know, you're buying it as an R one lot. So doesn't come with future zoning changes included.
All right. Any other comments before we open the public hearing?
Well, I, eh, this might've been answered earlier, but what is the maximum number of lots that this can be split into without it coming to council? Two, right?
Correct. All right. Uh, this is a public hearing where anyone would like to address the council on this matter? Yeah, just make your way to the podium, state your name for the record and uh just keep an eye on uh the light indicator box next to Ms. Williams.
Um, my name is David Diaz. Can we put that slide back up where it had the the ad for, I mean, the description of this lot? Okay, so the fourth bullet point, it says minimum lot size ten thousand square feet. Does that mean within that six point four seven acres, they could split it up into minimum lot sizes of ten thousand square feet?
That is correct.
So if that's the case, Councilman Lane is correct. You could put twenty plus houses on that lot. If I was to take you to court right now and buy that lot, I could use that wording right there. I could put twenty plus houses on that lot.
That, that's just what the R one.
Yeah. So I just think, I think the cart and I, Mr. Councilman Moses is correct. The cart is way before the horse here. This lot shouldn't even be for sale right now. We're going to vote, are you going to vote on selling it to these people? I guess they already went to auction. But why did we even have it on auction? Just because of the city owns the lot. I think it's way, but way premature what we're talking about. And Mayor, you and I have had conversations about lots that had been sold years ago where we have beautiful lakefront property, but it's, it's storage areas. And I think six point four seven acres of prime real estate in a residential area like that needs to be more thought out and looked at down the road. That's just my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. You just, yeah, make your way to the podium, state your name for the record.
Mayor and council, thank you for your time tonight. Uh, my name is Dan Blazer. I'm a, I'm a property owner on Monizuma Drive. I come to present you with a petition from nineteen individual property owners that are adjacent to this piece of property that would really like you to not sell this lot this evening. The amount of concern, there's a, a few concerns different among different residents. Um, some of the concerns we have with the sale of the parcel are drainage issues that include a four hundred and fifty foot long by twenty-five foot wide berm that's protecting all of the properties on Monizuma Drive. And approximately a hundred and eighty feet of twenty-four inch culvert pipe that also drains the water out adjacent to uh thirty-nine forty through a drainage easement. There's also, as, as Stuart said before, there's a couple of berms that have been built on the arrow, arrow wood or Arrowhead side uh to take care of drainage for those two properties. The other drainage issues have been taken care of and been maintained by the city for over twenty-five years. That berm that, that is currently there, that's four hundred and fifty feet long and twenty-five feet high or twenty-five feet wide uh blew out at one point after I bought my house there. It didn't affect me, thank God. But had there been a house on that lot at the time? Excuse me. That's the reason that this berm was built and this berm has been in place for twenty-five plus years. Um, some of the other concerns that residents have, the elevation in this lot is from the highest point to the lowest point in this lot, there's seventy feet of fall in elevation. And that seventy feet of fall in elevation is still five feet above my property. So if someone was to come in and flatten that out, obviously they're not going to dig it all the way down to the elevation of my lot. If someone comes in and builds houses there, they're going to be looking down into all of our backyards. They're going to be looking down in all of our ba- our, our, our back windows, all the rest of that stuff. And there's nothing that we can do as property owners to, to, to rectify that after it's been done. I can't build a forty-five foot high wall to, to block the view of anybody that's going to be up there. You know, I can't put in fifty foot high mature trees, you know, that kind of thing. Uh, the big, one of the big concerns is, eh, that's been discussed is obviously the future changes from the current single R one lot to multiple properties. That uh, uh, the access to this being thirty feet wide, I'm sure that if you get ahold of the people on Arrowhead where that comes out, they're not going to want a cul-de-sac emptying out in front of their house where there was never a cul-de-sac before. And I, like I said, I've got a, I've got a petition here with, with nineteen and it's nineteen different property owners. It's not, you know, it's not husband and wife signing it, you know, that kind of thing that I'd like to, that I'd like to leave for you. Um, yeah, there's, there's, there's basically nineteen pieces of property that are going to be negatively affected by this. And it's going to be a quality of life issue for the residents that are there. And like I said, there's nothing we can do to rectify that. Thank you.
Thank you. You can just leave that with Ms. Williams. Would anyone else like to address the council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the in-person call to the public. Uh, Ms. Williams, do we receive any written comment on this item? Okay. So bring it back to council for, for uh further discussion, um, possible motion. So I, I don't disagree that um it's unfortunate that we're here today, having to have this discussion that the, the proposed purchaser went through this process. Um, I, I'm assuming with the, the thought that it was um, um, eh, uh, supported by, by council or by, by the city. Uh, and, and then we have neighbors that have been, you know, the largest investment that they make there is now on the line. And that's what we'll now be discussing. Um, again, just to, eh, to reiterate where I stand is these large uh multi-acre center of neighborhood parcels, I do not think is, is the time to, to be selling them. There's no uh interest in, in the city to, to do so. Uh, that doesn't mean that something like Hunter Lane, that was a single family lot that made sense and, and was, was ready and prepared to go. Um, and somebody petitioned the city to do it, should not have been able to move forward. Or if somebody comes forward and, and wants to buy land that the city holds, that's on our list of not ne- needed, but they're the adjacent landowner, that, that might not make sense. So uh, we'll have to continue to have these conversations, but you know, that's, that's really where my, my position is at on, on these types of, of uh land actions. And I don't think that um it's much different than those of the citizens that live in these neighborhoods or other neighborhoods in the future that are going to come forward.
Mr. Mayor, I, I agree with you on that. Um, I guess my biggest concern is, like I said, nineteen of, the, there's twenty-six buildable, from what the picture looks is there's twenty-six houses and four empty lots. So there's thirty property owners. And if that's nineteen of them got together and said that, you know, they're against it, I, I would definitely have a pro- a concern about, I, concern about it. Um, I just get worried about the whole one size fits all approach to every land sale we're going to do from here on out. Um, I'd almost like to see a, a neighborhood meeting before there is a, a sale. So we kind of get a feel, you know, because I think some sales would be fine. Like I said, if it's a flag lot or if it's one of those that's not connected or there's, you know, you can. or there's, you know, you can access it from existing roads that are there. It's just, I guess that, that's, it's my concern is, well, other than my kids with precedents, when I can just say, well, because I said so. But, um, you know, setting precedent is, is what I think we do up here, and I guess that's just my biggest concern. So, you know, I, I guess I've changed my opinion on this one mainly just because nineteen of the, the thirty, neither nineteen of thirty, or nineteen of the 26 are not in favor of it, so.
Yeah, but you know, petitioners have, uh, they, they understand the risk when they come forward, and it just requires this, this conversation. So that's why we get paid the big bucks to, to have these conversations and see what makes, makes sense for the neighborhoods. And, uh, and that's where it goes. So, but I think that just, again, our, whatever the outcome is of, of tonight, uh, will set the tone, uh, for staff to properly advise future folks, and for future folks that are interested in, in looking at city-owned assets.
Mayor?
Councilmember Campbell?
Um, can I recommend as well, moving forward, if we're looking at these bigger parcels that include 24 homeland development, that we have traffic studies, and that can flow into the other neighborhood before we even look, look into this again?
Yeah, right now, yeah, great feedback, and I think it's, it's, uh, it's being heard. Uh, right now, we're not here to look at the policy, which was adopted in 2008. But, uh, maybe in the future, that's something that we might have to, to do, to take into your, your comments there.
Mr. Mayor? There are any other comments? I'm sorry.
I just have a random question for, um, city attorney. You love it when I do this, don't you? Can we put a contingency based on it, that it's approved up to, you know, because like I said, I have a hard time approving this, not knowing what's going to be there, as do all the neighbors do, you know? This, or in futures, can you, can we put a process, a zoning request as part of it as well? It's heard before council, it's put together as a PD, and then it's locked into a specific PD from here on out? I mean, I guess, like I said, maybe not this specific lot, but some of these lots in general. I mean, if they're spending a lot of time and energy, and they have development plans, and we haven't been able to see, you know, I mean, they may have the, but, but super nice houses there, and it may be, you know, if we finally got to that point, it may be great. Maybe the neighbors, once they had the meeting, and they, oh, they think it's great. Maybe our values are going to go up because of it, you know? We don't know that, you know?
Yeah.
So I guess that's something we could do in the, in the future, or is that something?
Yes, I think those are some things that we can look at, different methods to employ, to, to address those concerns in the future. We can't do it with respect to what we're talking about tonight. Those, those auctions have already happened. Any contingencies should have been placed at the time, um, they were put up for bid. So, moving forward, those are definitely things that we can look at and try to formulate different ways to address those things.
Councilmember Campbell, did you have, uh, something to add there?
Yeah, um, can we ask the applicant, would she still be interested in the property if she could only build two homes on it?
Yeah, she's not interested. Yeah, she just replied from the audience.
All right, uh, Mr. Mayor, that was just my, my question that I was going to ask to the applicant. Hearing everything that you've heard tonight, does your bid still stand?
Well.
Oh, you're going to have to make your, make your microphone, yeah.
Here's how I look again at this. The property went up for bid. The city put it up for bid. You're allowed 10,000 square, on your lot square footage. So lately, on this R1 lot, you could put 24 houses. I don't plan on putting 24 houses. But we do, in all honesty, have a plot map that we're working on with 14 houses on it. They are going to be nice houses, uh, nice like villas with tile roofs, 1,800, 2,000 square feet, with, uh, maybe even a little bigger on some of them, a little, um, a little smaller. Money has been spent already on working on these plats, um, and a lot of time, a lot of energy with, uh, engineers, et cetera. Moving forward, if you all are not going to, in the future, when it comes time to take a look at this, if you're saying right now that you're not going to vote for 14, for these 14 homes, I would not be interested in moving any, forward anymore, as I've spent over $25,000 already, just on where we are today. So, you know, my intention was to subdivide this and, uh, have a little gated type of subdivision there. And, uh, so, you know, I don't, and the houses will be beautiful. It will increase the land around it. It'll make the values of the homes around that better, because they'll be very nice homes. So I don't see you have, you know, this piece of land that can be subdivided and properly done through the city, through the planning and zoning, through the proper steps, to make decent houses, to make the roads and streets, and to do the proper grading. The lot went on the chopping block, I sort of say. Um, we purchased a lot. Anybody at that time could have called the city beforehand and said, we don't want to do this. All the neighbors knew. My partners that are sitting here live right behind this parcel. So they're totally aware of all the neighbors, et cetera. So if this is going to be the end game, that no, we can't do it, why would we move forward? But why wouldn't we move forward if it's going to be a nice subdivision? Why wouldn't we? That's all I would say.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yeah.
Can I make a comment?
Yes.
I can definitely tell you that Mrs. Nash does outstanding homes, beautiful developments. If anybody could possibly pull this off, she's probably the girl that can do it, no doubt about it. And so this is where it makes this hard, because like we said before, she's got $25,000 vested due to policies in place prior to probably this whole council. Um, here we sit today, and it's just a really hard place to be.
Are there any other comments or questions from council, or? No? Is anyone open to making a motion? Council, uh?
Yeah, I, I definitely think it needs its vote, um, either up or down. Like I said, based on what, um, what's going in there, and what the neighbors have said they wanted, knowing that, based on that lot, I, I would probably be a no, but like I said, I'll at least make a motion so we can, it can have its day. Um, I move to award the bid for sale of the city real property tract, not the right one. Yeah. 2218 Block 5, Parcel A, APN 111-20-262, in the amount of 475,000 to C.C. Nash.
All right, we have a motion from Councilmember Dolan. Is there a second?
In the interest of, of having a vote, yes, I'll make a second.
All right, we have a motion from Councilmember Dolan, and a second from Councilmember Lane. Any further discussion? All right, we're ready to vote. Councilmember Lynn?
Nay.
Thank you. Councilmember Campbell? Yeah. Co, Councilmember Campbell?
Nay.
Thank you.
Motion fails, zero to seven.
Thank you. All right, moving on to the next item on the agenda is item 8.3, award bid for the sale of city-owned property tract 2205, Block 8, Parcel G, located on Rolling Hills Drive to Chris Mendrop, APN 114-07-313. Mr. Schmeling?
All right, thank you, Mayor. This is also a, a public parcel sale. Um, once again, it's generally in the, in the southern portion of the community. Very similar in nature to the, the parcel we just saw. It is, it is bordered by Thunderbolt Avenue, uh, Moccasin Drive, as well as Rolling Hills Drive. Uh, you can see the, the access here. Um, like I said, very similar in nature to the last one. Uh, once again, here is the, uh, here's the track map. The 30-foot driveway in this particular case happens to be between 884 and 872, uh, Rolling Hills Drive. And the particulars, it's 5.46 acres. Once again, it's zoned R1, so all of the standards are the same. Um, all of the uses are the same. Uh, the appraised value on this one happened to be 175,000. Once again, we held an online auction from March 4th to April 12th. Uh, the, the successful bidder came in at 435,000. And once again, we have invited that individual, uh, to be in attendance in case you have any questions. And that concludes my portion. If you have any questions of me, I'd be happy to answer those.
Thank you, Mr. Schmeling. Are there any questions of Mr. Schmeling? Is the successful bidder in, in the room? Yeah, Chris, if you can make your way to the podium.
I will just ask the, the same question that was asked earlier. What is your intention with this land?
Well, good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council. Um, first of all, let me introduce my partner. This is Tim Davis. He's a local resident and builder. And we have, uh, well, we wanted to make our intentions perfectly clear tonight. And to that effect, we have a handout for the council members, and if there's somewhere else to show it, that would be great. But it basically shows some preliminary thoughts on our part to develop this property under the R1 zoning standard, in compliance with the R1 zoning standard, uh, into a minimum of 12 residential lots. The topography at this point in time makes it look somewhat like a moonscape. Uh, I don't think it's very attractive, at least from my perspective. And I think that we can, um, uh, put a development here that the neighborhood would be proud of. It would increase property values. The access, again, is limited, as Mr. Schmeling had said. Um, but we believe, again, that this, uh, would be successfully accommodated with very few houses, very little traffic. And I'll let my partner speak to that.
Thank you, Mayor, council. Um, yeah, just, we've just put in a, a lot, a lot of work on this. We've had several meetings with, with Mr. Schmeling and Luke on, on this project, and trying to make sure we were doing everything correctly. Um, the intent, if you, if you look at the intent, um, on the auction, was this, this property was to be sold, to be subdivided. And, and that's why we, we've spent, I mean, you can see, we've already got, um, a lot of our plat work is already completed. So, we're just asking that, you know, I mean, whether you put a park in there or, or something else, you, you're still going to create traffic of some sort. So I don't think the traffic thing, i- is a big deal, especially with just 12 homes. You, you're not going to create that much more traffic. So, that's, that's all I have at this point.
Yeah, do any other members of the council have any questions for the successful bidder?
Same question we've asked the last one, is if we did sell it, and it was only going to stay single-family, and you could split it to two units, are you still interested in it?
No, no, we, we would have to bail at this point. And we've spent a lot more than $25,000, trust me.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Comments or questions from council?
Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Campbell?
Again, because this is a flag lot, that 30-foot entrance going onto the main street on Thunderbolt, that is my concern.
Yeah, thank you. Any other comments or questions? All right, seeing that, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing that, we'll close the public hearing. Ms. Williams, we did not receive any written comments on this item. Thank you. Bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Once again, I'm concerned. I mean, it's still, you know, precedents is, they want to do the exact same thing as the previous people. The only difference is, is we didn't hear from any of the neighbors, but we didn't, you know, technically, other than tonight, give everyone the opportunity to come speak on their behalf. You know, I think everyone should have their time to speak. It, I definitely would maybe like to give staff direction in the future, if we do put lots up, or if we can somehow, you know, honor, honor these bids up until we, maybe we get it in place, but be able to have that public process where the neighbors can come out, because I think each lot is different, and the neighbors' reactions are different. And, um, like I said, each piece of land is totally different. So, uh, maybe that's something we can definitely do in the future. I don't know, like I said, if we can re, put these out, for example, at the same bid, you know, with the same process after those meetings were happened, with the zoning changes. And then I'd be more willing to say yes or no, based on hearing from every neighbor. Everyone had their opportunity to say yes, no. I mean, I think it's interesting now the neighbors are here too, and this is a similar lot size, similar houses. But it's, it's hard to judge, you know, because it's still not the exact same lot with the exact same neighbors. So, once again, I think we're in a sticky area, so.
Yeah, I mean, to put in perspective, this is 27 homes that circle around the same neighborhood. You know, my position doesn't change. It's, it's the same thing, these large parcels that are inside these, uh, these areas that were left over, um, there, unless it was strategic in nature, which I don't see that this one is, um, I just don't support that as a matter of policy.
I guess just kind of, strategic in nature still bothers me too, because if, well, if it's strategic in nature, it's still not a good location. Even if it's good for us to sell, if it's not good for the community and the homeowners. Or like I said, I think some, certain lots, like I said, some of the flag lots, where it's, if the homeowners don't care, or, or they live next to it, and they want to buy it, and they're a part of it, I think that's kind of a different situation too, but.
But we're only talking about three parcels, lots of parcels we have.
Yes, lots of them we have, yes.
Yeah, there are some other ones that make sense. So, I, I'll give the successful bidder an opportunity after we have some more discussion with the council. Chris, yeah. Are there any other comments from council?
Mayor, I, I just have that concern about, how do you take, like, maybe staff can assist? Like, how does Thunderbolt access a driveway that's only 30 foot wide, that accesses maybe 24 homes, 12 homes, 15 homes? I just know how much work goes into expanding streets, ways, turn, turning signals, all of that. But when it comes to these flag lots, again, I keep saying that, those are my biggest concerns about all of this.
Thank you. All right, Chris, did you have a, some final comments before we?
I, I appreciate it. I was just going to say that I think that, um, all of these lots are unique because of topography. This one serves well to be developed. Um, and if council is, uh, is moving towards denying the sale tonight without input from the neighbors, we would have no problem having the vote delayed, giving those neighbors an opportunity to speak to us, speak to you, speak to planning. But certainly, we'd like to speak with them and, um, give them our view, what the plan is, because right now, I believe that they are looking at somewhat of a trash heap. There are tires back there, there are dilapidated metal. Um, I think that there's an upgrade here. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Mayor?
Yeah.
So, to speak to what his comment was, if we were not to approve the sale this evening, they could petition the council at a later, or petition the city at a later date to buy the property and go through that process, correct? Because that is how the process is. Somebody can petition us to purchase property.
Yeah, cur, currently, yeah, that could. I don't know how, um, and that these folks have spent a lot of money, uh, and, and were.
And I completely understand that, and I don't like to see anybody spend money for, for no reason. But also, I'd rather see them spend a smaller amount of money than a huge amount of money, and then come back to us and have us say, no, we're not going to let you split that lot into that many different parcels. And now you're out way more money than you would have been out if you were just out the smaller amount from the beginning. So it's a catch 22. If you already know that, given if you were to come back to us in a, in a couple months, the answer would be, no, we're not, we're not willing to do that. Do you really want to put the investment out now? Because you know what the answer is later. So I wouldn't want to do it, but that's me, and that's my money. But maybe others are willing to take that risk. I don't know.
Yeah, and if that was the case, uh, they would have to go back through the auction process, and they might not be the successful bidder, uh, through that process. But they could petition, yes. Yeah, Tim, did you have?
Yeah, I did.
Yeah, just make your way to the microphone.
Sorry, I, I lost my train of thought. I've, I've got a lot going on. Um, let's see. So, I'm sorry, would you reiterate what you were saying? Oh, okay, never mind, I got it. So, let me ask you guys this. If, if we came back with a majority of the neighbors being okay with this development, would it change your mind? being okay with this development, would it change your mind? Is it all about the neighbors?
My position is still about the strategy of these, these centralized land holdings. And, and by a matter of policy is my position on it. So obviously, the neighbors are important.
Okay.
But.
Anybody else?
I think I've answered that a few times, and I don't mean to be smart about it. No, I do. I think what the, the neighborhood and the neighbors that have a financial loss and gain in the area, it is important. And that's where I, I just get, I get worried about the precedent we set. You know, like I said, the, the last lot, this is what they said, exactly what they want to do. Nineteen neighbors say they're flat out against the sale. But we don't know if they're flat out, if they're against the sale because they didn't know what was going to be there or they're just flat out against anything there, you know. So that process, to me, is concerning because maybe they could make a presentation, they could go through that. And then the neighbors would be like, well, that's not that bad. Or, you know, oh, by the way, we're going to give a ten-foot or fifteen-foot, you know, easement all the way around the property that can be extended onto your lot. And then we're going to put five houses or ten houses on, you know. They may be able to come up with something that is good for the neighborhood. So yeah, I guess that is my concern, is that there is no neighbor impact. But like I said, we put the cart before the horse, but there's really no avenue for us to do it the other way. And that's why, like I said, I was ready to, I'm fine with selling the land, but you're buying it, even the appraisal says you're buying it as-is. It's a single fam, it's a, it's zoned one lot. You're buying it as that. And if you want to take that risk to come back to council again, you know, I'm off, like I said, I'm fine with selling it. I was a little hesitant selling the other one because we have nineteen neighbors that are flat out against it. And they don't want it unless they can put their plan on it and the neighbors don't want that. But like I said, I'm fine with selling it if it's as-is. You may get somebody that wants to just literally put two lots or they own a lot next to it and they want to add to it. So I just don't want us to absolutely say no to every single property because of that precedent. So like I said, I wish there was a day we, we could delay this. I don't know if that's a possibility. You know, or honor their bid pending something else. But like I said, I'm, I'm fine with selling the property because I think there's some properties that we just don't need. Especially right now in this market, it was appraised at one-seventy-five and it goes for five-hundred or a little four-seventy-five or whatever. I'm, I'm fine with that. If it's not strategic to us at all, then why are we holding on to it? And, but some of these, these are some big lots and there are some of them are unbuildable and some shouldn't be built on. And maybe some could be joined with other lots and build or, you know, some could be buildable. So I, yes, I would be, I, I think that the neighborhood opinion is, is a, is a big issue for me. And I think in the past, we've shown that precedent too with developments coming in. And there's no issues, surroundings are just similar. Well, great, we're fine with it. But when there is public coming out saying, we don't want this, we live in this neighborhood, it's going to adversely affect our property values, we do listen and we haven't, I don't think we have approved those in the past, so.
And you said that, now keep in mind, the city put up a, at the entrance, a public notice that was posted. It was also posted in the paper. So people, I mean, they, they knew about this. It's not a surprise.
And that's where, like I said, I'm still back to my, it's okay to sell if you're willing to take that risk to buy it, knowing you can only do this. But you're willing to take that risk to then go to the zoning process and then have another sign go up. And then you have to have the two meetings and go through that process. I mean, like I said, if you're willing to take that risk, I'm fine with the sale as long as you're willing to take that risk. But like I said, if you come back to me with sixty percent of the neighbors saying we're flat out against this, that would definitely be part of my decision and it has been in the past, so.
Well, I, I don't know about that. You, you know, I, I know there's been other developments where you've actually said to, to adjacent homeowners is that, yeah, nobody wants a particular home or homes being built, but they bought the property, they're, they're doing it per the code, per all the regulations. So I've heard you say that before in other meetings, one on Colt, to be exact.
Well, and that's why I'm back to each, each land piece is differently and it's.
And the difference with that is that was private holdings. It wasn't public holdings. The Colt property was private holdings.
Right.
And we're talking about public holdings tonight.
Okay, but they also took the risk in that and going to that motion and getting it to that point as well too. So like I said, it's just that the buyer beware, I guess, is, my yes would come with a buyer's beware.
Well, and just to that point, I mean, I want to make our intentions perfectly clear that our intent was to develop this into a minimum of twelve lots. And if we've been misled, please take that into consideration.
All right, so back to council, we can entertain a motion. If anyone has an interest in making a motion. Yeah, not making a motion would have the same effect as this failing. So I'm hearing no motion?
Did it last time? I'll do it this time. I think it needs its, its up or down from us, so. I move to award the bid for sale of the city real property, tract two-two-zero-five, parcel eight, parcel G, APN-one-one-four-zero-seven-three-one-three, in the amount of four hundred and thirty-five thousand to Chris Mendraw.
In the interest of the vote, I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion from Councilmember Dolan and a second from Councilmember Lane. Need further discussion? All right, we're ready to vote. Councilmember Lynn?
Nay.
Thank you. Councilmember Campbell?
Nay.
Thank you.
Motion fails zero to seven.
Thank you. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, item eight-point-four is award bid for the sale of city-owned property, tract one-one-eight, Lot A, located at eighty-one South Wester Lane to Jeffrey Gilbert, APN-one-zero-five-dash-one-six-dash-two-one-zero. Mr. Schmeling?
All right, thank you, Mayor and Council. This is the last of my land sales this evening. This one happens to be in the center, more in the center of town. You can see the property here. It's bordered by, it's, it comes up, it has access off of South Wester Lane, bordered by Eldorado Avenue and Cisco Drive. Once again, here, here's the track map. You can see the unique shape of this lot. This lot, it begs to mention, I guess, that it does have ninety-foot of frontage, so it's a little bit different than the other two, a little unique. It is between eighty-nine South Wester and seventy-five South Wester. And once again, zoning is the same. It's two-point-seven-four-six acres. Uses are the same. The appraised value on this property was a hundred and seventy-three thousand. We held an online auction from March fourth to April eighth. The, the successful bidder came in at a hundred and seventy-five thousand. And once again, we've asked the potential buyer to be in the audience in case you had any questions. If you have any questions of me, I'd be happy to answer those.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Schmeling. So the ninety feet is on South Wester?
That is correct.
Frontage?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Any, any other questions? Yeah, Councilmember Lane?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Stuart, at the end of the cul-de-sac there, it looks like there's another access. Is that to that one-point-one-seven acres?
That is correct. This, at the end of South Wester cul-de-sac, there is another property, one-point-one-seven acres, and that is a flag lot.
And who owns that?
That is owned by the applicant, as we found out when we went through this process.
Okay, and then there's another lot behind that that looks like zero-point-eight-two acres and it looks like that has a twenty-foot access?
That is correct.
And we know who owns that lot?
I do not, right off the top of my head.
Okay. But there is, for this one lot, there is a ninety-foot access for an actual, if they decided that they wanted to split this, put houses in there, they would be able to actually put a street in there and not just the driveway.
That is correct. They could meet the minimum requirement for a cul-de-sac right-of-way, which is fifty feet.
And at the narrow part there, do you know how wide that lot is?
The narrow part being right here?
Yes.
I do not, I'm sorry.
Nothing further, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions of Mr. Schmeling? All right, Mr. Gilbert, do you want to make your way to the podium? Thank you. We'll ask you the same question, what your intentions are with this.
Mayor, Council, thank you. I'm still flustered over all the water rights and, over the fees, so. But I'm okay. For this property, it's unique in the matter of, we do have ninety feet frontage, as Mr. Stuart Schmeling mentioned, that we can come in and we own that property for over twenty years, where you can just exit out through the cul-de-sac too. So access, as we know, is wide open. And everyone that lives in Lake House who knows, we're in a unique area. Every lot is different. There's no track homes. Ninety percent of our lots, different sizes. And our intent is to develop it, to put approximately six homes on there and join the two lots if, if that is helpful for us to do that.
Excellent, thank you. Do any other councilmembers have any questions of the successful bidder?
Well, that's the same question I've asked everyone else. If you bought it for this price as-is, knowing you could put one house on it or split it as two, is it still worth buying for what it is?
Yes.
Okay.
Mayor, question?
Yeah, Councilmember Campbell?
Mr. Gilbert, would you, if you were to marry those together, would there be two access ways in and out of your development then?
Yes.
And you would be responsible for all traffic, flow studies and whichever going forward?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, are there any, any other questions of the successful bidder? Councilmember Lane?
I do, thank you. Stuart, if you could go back to the plot map there, I appreciate it. Yeah, that's fine. So your intention is to marry these two lots and then you will have one, basically, will take this from being a cul-de-sac to being a circle?
Yes.
Okay, so Stuart, how wide is that access at the end of the cul-de-sac?
The driveway to his private parcel?
Yes, at the end of the cul-de-sac, because he says his, his intention is to marry those two lots and then make that a circle, not just a cul-de-sac. So is that wide enough to make a street there as well?
I believe the driveway on that private property is twenty feet, if I recall.
Forty feet, approximate forty feet.
I might have to get out my glasses here, hold on.
It says forty.
It, it is forty feet.
Right there.
It's the forty right there. It is forty feet. However, that would not meet the minimum for a, for a dedicated cul-de-sac.
So then it would have to be a private roadway with a homeowners association that would be responsible for it?
That, that is correct.
But would you need a cul-de-sac there?
No, that was just a, no, no, he wouldn't have to. He would still have the egress and the ingress and it basically would be two cul-de-sacs coming out there, but he had said that he was going to make it a circle.
Gotcha.
So.
Or allow people to have an entrance or exit out that way.
So, Mayor, question?
Yes, Councilmember Campbell?
So he could make that a private gateway entrance for maybe half this parcel. Again, because we have the, as long as we have the larger access way for fire truck, police, I like that you have two locations that you could go in and out of. I feel it's a lot safer for the community. And again, he's willing to take the risk, he says, on this particular property. And he'll have to go through the whole planning and hopefully, traffic studies as well. So this particular parcel looks completely different to me than the other two that we were looking at.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, and I, I would agree. This parcel is different. It has ninety feet of frontage to, to get in and out. And the applicant or the successful bidder has, has a parcel that they would tie to it to, to make that make more sense. Again, it's not a one-size-fits-all on all of these parcels and that's what, that's where the risk comes into play.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
And I'd come back to what I've said for all three people is, you know, I'm willing to sell it as long as they know there's buyer's beware. If you put this plan together and it comes back to the city in a zoning request and then the neighborhoods have, neighbors have their say or whatever, you know, then I think that's, is going to be, you know, as I said, you may end up with a hundred and seventy-thousand-dollar lot that you can't build six houses on, but you can still build two. And if you're okay with that, but like I said, that's just that buyer's beware. I want, you know, it's, I'm okay with selling the lots. It's just, it's, when it comes to that, when it comes to putting any more than two houses on them, it's going to come back before us and it's going to, you know, like I said, if you're willing, people are willing to take that risk. I'm, like I said, I'm fine with it, but if the neighbors are against it and it's not welcomed in the area and it's, you know, it's definitely something we need to consider, so.
Yeah, Councilmember Moses?
Yeah, if, if we can go back to the plot map. So I, I know the frontage, we have ninety feet, which is big enough, more than big enough to make a street there. But the, the little pinch point right there concerns me that that's not ninety feet. So, yeah, we got ninety feet at the, at the road, but can that road even get through into the lots to, you know, for the potential development? Because that is, I mean, that is what's making me comfortable with this, is that there is an actual road that can go in. But, uh, but I have concerns that that road goes nowhere. And we can't answer that, can we?
I, unfortunately, I do not know the, the, the distance here at the pinch point, as you called it. But i- if this represents ninety-foot of frontage and the minimum requirement for a platted cul-de-sac right-of-way is fifty, it, it appears, at least from, from this, and, and I'll go to this one because it's a little larger, that you could conceivably get fifty-foot of right-of-way in there.
He's about to turn your microphone on. Councilmember Moses?
Well, looking, if you take that rectangle, is that two-seventy on the top and one-ninety on the bottom? Two-hundred-and-seventy feet? And then a hundred-and-ninety feet on the bottom?
Correct.
So you could do a little math and that's eighty feet?
Give you eighty, yeah?
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah, Councilmember Lynn?
Yeah, I have two questions. First, the first question is, the dividing them up, if he went to zoning and everything, like we talked with the other ones, they could divide up into like twenty-some lots or something. What is the most that this could be divided on if it did go to zoning?
If you're asking what's the density in the R1 district, if you simply apply the four-point-five maximum density against the two-point-seven-six-four acres, you're going to get twelve units max.
Okay, and then my second question is, and so, and just so I'm on the same page, there, there is a possibility of two entrances in here, correct? Into this property, two different entrances?
Yes, the, the applicant also owns the property to the south that exits onto South Wester. And so, yes, there's the potential for two access points if he decides to tie those together.
Okay, and then I guess I have that question for the applicant if that, I, I'm kind of hearing what he's saying, but I kind of want to have a for sure on that, if that's what he's thinking of doing. And then my last question, after he answers that, is can you give us just a little bit on the, this property is the as-is condition and just something, you know, give us some information on that. Maybe there was a well there or something. Can you just give us what that even looked like, some information on that? And that's all I have.
I don't have any additional information on the site, other than there is a, a well on the property and it hasn't been used and it, it has not been closed or capped. One of the conditions of the sale was that the well be capped prior to, and, and registered through what, ADQ, prior to any development of the site.
Okay, I guess that kind of answers a little bit. Okay, and then, that's his, is his intent to marry the two together so that there's two entrances?
Mr.?
I didn't hear, I'm sorry.
Is your intent to marry the lot that you already own with this if, if this were to pass?
Yes, I do.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions of the successful bidder?
All right, I have one, I just.
Maybe Councilmember Dolan?
Yeah, I, I, you know, I caution you like I do everybody else, but I, I, I see your optimism with six lots. I guess it will all come down to when the request came in and how the neighbors say about it and how you laid them out. But I definitely, you know, for the price of it, even if you've got two lots out of it or three lots out of it, I mean, it does seem to pencil out, so I see the, the risk is less. But like I said, I just want to echo that buyer beware that, you know, it's coming back to us at that point is.
Sure.
But like I said, I think you do have a little, owning that. But like I said, I think you do have a little owning that other lot. I mean, you could, you know, even give a section of that to the other lot if you needed to. And then you had two Xs there and one on the other side, you could get, you know, two, even if you had to just split it two, two ways at that point, you still have two decent lots that you can work with. But like I said, that's, that's what you're okay with in the end result, assuming it doesn't go exactly how you want it and you're willing to take that risk, you know, as long as it's, like I said, buyer beware.
Excellent. All right. Thank you, Mr. Gilbert. All right. This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing now, we'll close the in-person call to the public hearing. And Ms. Williams, I do not believe we received any on this either. Okay, we have no written comments either. So bring it back to council for further discussion, possible motion?
I guess I'm the motion guy on this one. Chickens. I move toward the bid for the sale of city real property track 118 lot A APN 108 16 to 10 in the amount of 175,000 to Jeffrey Gilbert.
I second that.
All right, we have a motion from Councilmember Dolan. We have a second from Councilmember Campbell. Is there any further discussion? All right. Hearing now, we're ready to vote. Councilmember Lynn?
Hi.
Thank you. Councilmember Campbell?
Hi.
Thank you.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. All right, moving on to item 8.5 is ratify change order number one to construction contract for the backup water supply wells with Stewart Brothers Drilling Company. Good evening, Mr. Hart.
Man, Jason gets here and everybody leaves. Is this turned on?
It is. Yeah. Is the green light on?
Yes, it is.
Okay, yes.
Great. Thank you. Well, thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council. I appreciate the opportunity to come before you tonight. I know you've been here almost three hours and I'm probably really excited to hear what I have to share with you. So we'll go ahead and move forward with that. I've come before you tonight with recommendation to ratify a change order number one to a construction contract for Northwell Backup Supply Drilling Project. And I believe, if I can spot it here, I have access to a PowerPoint. I apologize for not being just so handy dandy. This is embarrassing. And thank you for your patience. I don't know if I've ever seen this many icons on it.
The Vice Mayor was, Coke was commenting that she's never seen a desktop that looks like that. Unfortunately, mine does look like that. So I can find my way around.
Keeping me on my toes. I appreciate that. So what I have here is the Northwell Replacement Backup Water Supply Well Drilling Project WT 7530. I want to note the wonderful picture there of work in progress. That is actual drilling of the well at the water treatment plant, that well is identified as well 23. Just as kind of a background, City Council, you folks awarded the project to Stewart Brothers Drilling back on December 8th, 2020. The purpose of the project was several components to it, to abandon two existing wells that were no longer functional, and to drill, construct, develop, test, and disinfect two new water supply wells. The project schedule was approximately five months. Anticipated completion was July 2021, which we're actually a little bit ahead there. The engineer's estimate was 1.4, 1,410,000. And the low bid was Stewart Brothers that came in at 1,408,902. At that time, the two wells that were being planned were going to be drilled approximately 570 lineal feet. And we were estimating a capacity of each well at around 1,400 gallons per minute or hopefully greater. Just as a reminder, this aerial is of the two new wells. Well 23 is actually in the water treatment plant yard there. And well 22 is in the Public Works parking lot. If you were to drive out there today, which I'll show you a picture here at the end of what it, what it currently looks like, you'd be able to see both wells. Well 23 haven't already been sealed up and waiting for the next phase of this. During the drilling of well 23, which is located at the water treatment plant, the geophysical lodging, excuse me, logging showed a potential for increasing the yield capacity of the well due to characteristics of the materials encountered in the borehole. And then we did like a seven analysis of the material that showed the gradation of the materials more porous than anticipated, both above and below the original casing. And it was determined that there was potential to take advantage of what could be a highly productive aquifer zone by increasing the depth and length of the the well screen. And at that point, decision was made to go ahead and drill the wells additional 30 feet and to take the the well screenings and raise it 20 feet above what we thought would be the top of the well and extend it 30 feet down. Obviously, there's a change in conditions there, a change or being required. And we ended up with a final pump test and making that decision to go ahead and move forward with that. Because if you're aware of construction out in the field and drilling, it's a, it's really on the go and a lot of things are moving. And we make fairly quick decisions at the time, which if you want to call a couple of weeks a quick decision. But in this case, it would be the final pump test proved that the decision was a correct one with the well showing the ability to yield 1,800 gallons for an increase overall of 2.6 million compared to the 2 million gallons. So by making that field adjustment and changing the parameters of the well casing and such, we increased this particular well by more than 0.6 million gallons a day, which is wonderful. It's great news. And we're looking at, we've made the change as well to well 22, and we're anticipating very similar, if not very close to this production as well. So we're very happy to be looking at an increase of potentially 1.2 million gallons a day with these two changes we made to these wells. The change order itself did come to 205,261, which is why we're here before you today, because the original contract was for 1.408. I do want to show you this picture. This is currently of the well pump testing device that's set up there at our water treatment plant. Unfortunately, experienced dimension problems early this week, and they're in the process of getting those parts. They should be up and running again to finish what we call our 24-hour constant rate study that will verify what that yield is exactly. But we're anticipating to be very similar to the 1,800 we found with the water treatment plant. I don't know if you have any questions?
Yeah, thank you. Good work and good call out in the field. It definitely is going to benefit our water system for many years in the future. So questions of council?
Mr. Mayor, so that's, so this this increase is for well 22 and 23. It's for both, it's to increase both of them?
Yes, sir. It's increase both.
Mayor, question?
Yeah, Councilmember Campbell?
What aquifer did you end up hitting? What was the name of that one?
You know, I wish I could tell you what name it was.
Do you know, in other words, what region is it from? You know, okay.
I don't know off the top of my head. I apologize.
I'd like to know that. So sooner or later, somebody shoot that over to me. But good work in the field. Project manager, I'm constantly changing stuff in the field. And it's nice to be able to do it when you see it and get it done.
Thank you.
Any questions or Councilmember Lane?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. So we're looking at increasing 1.2 million gallons per day out of those two wells. And what is the average consumption per day for the city?
I believe it's close to 6.5 right now.
Okay.
So obviously, it's going to increase. But this is a new capacity. It's we're looking really good.
Will definitely help us when we have to take the raining well off for for service. Then the the next question, that nice big pump truck that you got there and you're doing that 24-hour testing and all that, would that explain why there's a constant high flow of water running across London Bridge Road there by Kirk Drive and where these new wells are going in?
Yes, it does. And I'm glad you brought that up because as as part of the the testing of the well and trying to determine its ultimate yield capacity, we have to go through a series of three tests. And one test is an eight-hour test, and it's just kind of running through some series of functions. And then there's a 10-hour test, where we're looking at some other things. And there's the final test, which is the 24-hour constant rate testing. And that's typically where you're going to see us getting up to, I know on the second phase, we got up to 2,500 gallons per minute. We don't know if we're going to see that on this constant rate, but that is why there's water crossing there. We were able to connect into the existing piping system of the current wells that there's a spot there in the wash where we've established an outlet. And it's a very suitable wash to be having this type of gallons per minute. So but that is why.
Yeah, I would hope we could handle it with all the money we've spent on that particular wash right there. So that's a good thing. And I was just curious because there's been water running across the road there. So that looks like we're pumping 1.2 million gallons a day for the 24-hour test across the road. So hopefully that doesn't count into our water allowance.
One of those things that's required the ADQ to test. So we have to do it.
All right. Any other questions or comments? All right. This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address us on this matter? Yeah, Mr. Brock?
I'm just curious about the water that is running into that wash. It would seem to me that when we do future wells, which you will be doing, I'm sure, that you find something that you can do with that test water rather than just letting it run back into the ground and evaporate. I'm sure it's not getting all down to the aquifer again. That's not all making it to the lake. I think it's a waste. You were talking about conserving water in our earlier discussions. And if you're going to conserve water when you're building your wells, you might as well start there. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, some of these requirements are from ADQ, and they require us to do certain things. But point well taken. All right, anyone else like to address this on this matter? All right, we'll go ahead and close the in-person call to the public. And we also did not receive any written comments on this item. Bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Dolan?
I want to keep making all the motions. I feel like I'm getting better at it. I move to ratify change order number one to construction contract for the backup water supply wells with Stewart Brothers Drilling Company in the amount of 205,261 and no cents.
Second, we have a motion from Councilmember Dolan and a second from Councilmember Lane. Is there any further discussion? Hearing now, we're ready to vote. Councilmember Lynn?
Hi.
Thank you. Councilmember Campbell?
Hi.
Thank you.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Hart.
Thank you very much.
All right, item nine on the agenda is our current events. Are there any council committee reports?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Lane?
I'd like to put out there that the city Metropolitan Planning Organization today voted to appoint Mr. Justin Hembray as the new director of the Metropolitan Planning Organization, following the resignation of Mr. Gallegos.
Yeah, excellent. Thank you. Any other council committee reports? All right, item 10, our future meetings on Thursday, May 13th, 2021, this Thursday at 9:00 AM, we'll have a budget, excuse me, a budget work session. And then on Tuesday, May 25th, 2021, at 6:00 PM, we'll have a regular meeting. And then on Tuesday, June 8th, 2021, at 6:00 PM, we'll have a regular meeting. And that also will be the meeting for our tentative budget and CIP adoption. Are there any future discussion items? Item 12 is adjourned, a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right, we have a motion from Councilmember Lane and a second from Vice Mayor Coke. We are adjourned. Everyone be kind. Thank you for joining us this evening.